Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our meeting. Council of Ortonville. It's now April 24, 2017, and it's now 7:02 PM. Let's rise and pledge allegiance and have our invocation, please. Dan, would you start?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fire heads, please. Lord, spring has sprung, and once again we marvel at your creation and the beauty therein. Trees are leaving out, grass is greening up, and flowers are blooming once again. Summer projects and activities in the village are coming together. We ask for your protection over and the safety of our DPW workers, our projects, their projects, and our activities of our volunteers throughout our community. Be with us tonight as we go through the agenda in front of us, guide and keep us. Amen. Roll call vote, please, Liz.
Bryce.
She's absent with notice. She'll be about another five minutes late.
Batsu.
Here.
Dialis.
He's absent with notice.
Eschman.
Here.
Skornika.
Here.
Sliva.
Here.
Wills.
Present. We have an agenda in front of you. Any changes or additions, please indicate so, please.
I'd like to add three items to the agenda for tonight, one being the Recreation Passport Grant. That had to do with the Sherman Memorial Concession Stand. I'd also like to add the Skate Park Management as a topic for discussion. And then I'd also like to add the quick claim deed on the village property tax ID 03-18-22-226-02.
Okay, so we have three items that we will add to the agenda, and we will place these under, they will become item nine, A through C. That means that for those of you in the public, that means that item 10 will become Public Comments on Agenda Items Only. New Business will be item 11. Item 12 will be Public Comments on Non-Agenda Items. Item 13 will be Items from the Village Manager, and finally, item 14 will be Adjournment. Any other changes, corrections? Make a motion, or I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended, and Dan, you will second that, right?
Support.
Okay, so a motion by Wills, supported by Eschman, to amend the agenda as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is received and approved. Also, in front of us this evening, we have our minutes from the March 27 regularly meeting, Do we have any corrections? There's a lot of notes. Lot of discussion. You've got a four pager here, front and back.
I would just like to have added on page seven, items from the village manager, where you have the vote, the six-zero in favor, and the one abstention, just to have it noted that it was myself that abstained because I was not present at that meeting, to keep it consistent with the rest of the minutes that we have, you know, whoever was voting nay or whatnot.
So, absent rather than one abstaining, correct? Is that what you're saying?
No, it can stay abstained because I was here. I just, I wasn't, I did not vote to approve the minutes because I wasn't at that meeting, so I wouldn't have.
I'm sorry.
So, I just.
Okay, gotcha.
So, I didn't feel I should vote on minutes that I wasn't at. So, I was just making, see how she has here, like Eschman voting nay on this particular one, just to make the same kind of comment.
I recall now. I see a typo on page four, bottom. The correct spelling of that person's name is G.L.E.N.N.I.S., Glennis. Any other comments? Good evening, Tanya.
I make a motion to approve the draft minutes of March 27, 2017, as amended.
Motion by Councilman Skornika, supported by Councilman Batsu, to accept the minutes of the March 27 council meeting as amended. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Acceptance items are the treasurer's report. Questions or comments there?
Does the building permit, the amount of the 618 as received, is that up to, let's see, maybe I can answer my question. Is that up to date based on the refunds that we have in the dispersment report?
I would believe so, yes.
So, that's a true figure after those two overpayments?
Any other comments, questions? Item seven, our agenda is dispersments.
I have a question on number three. The vendor, Morton Salt. We're paying $3,700, roughly $3,700 for salt, paid in April, or actually, the invoice was in March. But, so, are we paying upfront for salt that we're going to be using next winter, or this coming winter, or is this a past due invoice?
This was to ensure that we had adequate supply to get us through April in case we had a late snowfall, and we also had icing and salting requirements the last half of March.
So, we did take delivery of salt, then?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Don't we get it through the county, like through that discounted plan?
That is the pricing that we do receive, but there's two vendors that we're able to access salt from.
With the same pricing? So, I don't recall ever getting it from a Morton Salt before. Okay. And I know if we pay upfront, we get it early, then I know we get discount.
Okay, I have a question about number nine. American Sewer Cleaning. It says, "Cut camera and locate multiple storm drains." So, did we locate new storm drains? I would say after that map that you gave us of the storm drains in February, at the February 27th village council meeting?
This particular item related to snaking out plug drains that we were addressing.
Okay, so it's not new, newfound drains or anything?
Right.
I just have number six and number 20, 26? The refund overpayment permits, can you, just elaborate on why we had two refunds for permits? What happened that we took too much money in, or they decided to cancel the project?
I'm not familiar with the specifics of that, but it might have been.
Do you want me to clarify?
Yeah, if Liz knows.
We had one who, which was for the cell tower, not the tower, but the building. They were putting a new roof on, and we were unable to reach the building official to see if we actually needed a permit for that. So, we had the guy pay for the permit and found out that he did not need a permit for that. So, that was the number six.
Okay.
And then on number 26, the gentleman paid, rather than paying the base fee, which included two inspections, he paid for two separate inspections, which was more than the base fee, including the two inspections. So, that was the refund.
Question on, I guess it's 18, the DTE Energy. If I recall correctly, there was, maybe it was last month's billing, where we received the DTE bill earlier because they had already done the reading, and that we weren't going to get a bill? Anybody?
We got two the month before, didn't we?
Yeah. So, I guess I'm questioning why we have it on here for March.
Good question. Do you know, do you recall that, David?
Well, this invoice, it was dated March, and we're paying it at the end of this month. So, this is a current bill. The ones that you're referencing were from February, actually.
February, then, but we paid ahead, so was that was for March?
I believe so, yes.
So, you're saying that this is for April?
And number 13, the salt box, will we expect a repair, then?
The salt box has been repaired. This was a company that we had to utilize in an emergency situation with our salt box being down for a couple of days.
Because I didn't see it on there, so I didn't know if it's, will be repaired, haven't.
Yeah, in fact, another invoice that's listed there from Row Portable Welding, they're the company that did the repair on the salt box, number five.
And I have one last question on item number 21, Oxford Visa. It looks like there's several expenses there, one for conference fee, another one for maintenance in the old mill, and then also, I believe, streets. Are those three separate? So, those are three separate items that we paid, the 821, $9,700?
That's correct.
Could we have those broken out next time around on those Visa bills?
Sure.
When you've got multiples?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we pay our expenses for a total of $19,784.43 as presented.
Motion by Councilman Eschman, supported by Councilman Skornika. Any other discussion?
I just have a question. I would like to see the logomats, what those look like. I guess, I didn't see it when I was in the office the other day. I guess, number 29, logomats for the office in the Old Town Hall.
Oh. We should be receiving those shortly.
Well, that's why I didn't see it, okay. But maybe I need to look down more often.
Any other questions, comments? Harry Nun, roll call vote, please.
Batsu.
Yes.
Eschman.
Yes.
Skornika.
Yes.
Sliva.
Yes.
Wills.
Yes.
Bryce.
Yes.
Motion's carried. Tanya, you want to start?
Um, is that going to be discussed later, or am I going to discuss it now?
Go ahead, if you want to talk. You were talking about personnel?
No, I was talking about recreation.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Had a meeting briefly with Fred Waybrand to double-check the revised permission slip, I guess for lack of a better word, for the parents, to ensure safety from both sides. And so, that's revised, updated, and the information was in the Citizen about the Summers Program for the Skate Park.
I don't have anything to report. The fire board did not meet, so I have nothing to report there. I did stand in for Dan at a DDA meeting, and they discussed, I know some of the DDA members are here, they did discuss a few things, the Main Street Program, Friends of Amos, and that's for the donations for the upcoming fireworks. It's a separate 501(c)-3 nonprofit area. I think what the DDA was actually saying is that they may approach us to come and give us a couple, some, a few minutes of a synopsis of what's going on with the DDA, so that our council here will be more informed. Of course, Dave Trent was there, and Wayne, and Karen Sliva was a participant, a guest. He was there as an observer, observer.
Thank you for being there, too.
I do have one other question, though, and I'd like this, I'd like to actually address it to Dave Trent. Are we pursuing sewers, or are you pursuing sewers at this time in the village?
I'm investigating whether there's interest in the business community for sewers.
Okay. So, who would pay for that?
The business community.
Including operating it, too?
Yes.
So, it won't affect our tax?
That's correct.
I would have thought that there was a letter addressed to the local, some local business owners here, and I have it. I'd like to read it if I could, just to share it with anybody in the, any of the visitors or people on camera. If I have a couple of minutes to do that.
Sure, go ahead.
I actually have copies.
Do we have a copy?
Do you have?
No, I was just, yeah, I didn't know. I didn't know you had a letter.
Thank you. I'll try to go as quickly as I can. It was addressed April 17. Dear Sir and Madam, and it's from David Trent, the village manager. The subject of sewers in the village of Ortonville and portions of Brandon Township has been a topic of conversation off and on for 60 years. As a business and/or property owner in the DDA area of the village or along the M15 corridor, I would like to extend an invitation for you to join Supervisor Thurman and myself to continue that dialogue. We hope you can attend a forum designed to provide information and receive feedback from you on a new collaborative regional initiative to establish a sewer system to accommodate the needs of the commercial and business community. The forum will be held April 26, I believe that's Wednesday, from 9 o'clock to 11 o'clock at the Brandon Township Library in the Community Room. So, anybody that's interested, if you'd like to think about it, it's going to be at the Brandon Township Library. Additionally, consultants and engineers will be at this meeting to assist in the presentation and answering questions. Based on your feedback, we will determine whether this is an appropriate time to proceed with investigating the necessary plans to move forward with one of the concepts that will be introduced. Please confirm your availability, David Trent.
My question, David, after reading this, was that these businesses, DDA, are located in the village of Ortonville. I think as, so everybody can see and know and hear, I think it may have been a good idea to at least let the council in on the secret, if you would, so that we could maybe generate some discussion or something. And I just felt kind of left out in the wind. Am I wrong, or what?
Well, that certainly wasn't my intent, Mr. Batsu, and this forum, again, is just for information purposes. It's really just to take a survey of some of these business owners. In the six months that I've been here as your village manager, I've had the chance to meet with a number of business owners, and to this day, every single one that I've had the chance to meet and talk about the subject of sewers has indicated that they are a strong advocate for wanting to have sewers in the area. And if it's possible to create a system that just accommodates their needs, they would like to have that discussion. And so, that's the whole purpose of this. You know, something of this nature, if it were to develop traction, if there was a strong enough interest, if it made financial sense for the business community to invest in a separate system that would accommodate their needs, it's something that would take at least a year, year and a half of planning to orchestrate, another year and a half to implement and build. So, it's a long-term project, and again, this is just something that is in the very exploratory stage to see, is this something that the business community is willing to tackle and grasp and financially support? And in no way, shape, or form would it include, you know, the entire village as a whole. It would not impact residential homeowners, only those that are within the DDA and along the M15 corridor.
That's good, Dan. I'm glad you explained that. I think it would have been nice to explain it to us, also what you're doing, before we find out a few days, or the day of a meeting. I think that's what we were trying to get at, sometimes when things happen that we look at each other and say, what is happening? And we don't know. So, maybe in the future, for other different things, that we could maybe be on board a little bit and get a heads up.
Certainly.
Right.
David, who was this letter sent out to, other than in the village?
Property owners, property owners in the DDA and along the M15 corridor.
Where to where?
Brandon Township, starting at the Bullfrogs Restaurant and north up to the Beekys Plaza.
So, that would include Brandon Township and Groveland Township?
A very small portion of Groveland.
So, how was that district determined on how far to go and where to stop?
That was determined after several meetings with business owners to take a look at who was interested, what kind of financial costs that they had to undertake in recent years, or what they expect to undertake in the future. And also, as I've become more familiar with the area as well, you know, looking at it from a practical standpoint, where is the largest percentage of businesses located on the M15 corridor? If you're going to build a system, where, where's the financial return most applicable? So, we've kind of narrowed down, because initially, when I had the brainstorm of, well, maybe we could just make this work for the M15 corridor, I was looking at from the very south end of M15, at Brandon Township up to Beekys. And after some dialogue with Supervisor Thurman, talking to our engineers, because they've been very involved in this analysis over the last 20 years, as you may well be aware of, and we determined that a smaller scale regional approach might be more practical, just to try to reduce the cost.
And again, this, are you suspecting that this could be funded by a private developer, perhaps?
Too early in the game to know that.
What is one of the concepts that's going to be introduced?
We're looking at past scenarios, looking all the way up into the Oxford Interceptor, looking at it from a historical standpoint as to why it never proceeded with connecting into Genesee County, and looking at the costs that were involved in the village proposal of just a year and a half ago, and trying to determine what those costs may be if we took a very focused approach, as I've just outlined, just the M15 corridor and the DDA area.
Do you have that concept that you could present to us, we can review it? I mean, where?
When I say concept, again.
Well, something's going to be introduced at this meeting, so like, do you have a package or documentation submitted that we can review it?
Not yet, no. It's a work in progress. Again.
This is the 26, that's two days away.
Again, this is mostly just going to be discussion, provide information, talk about some of the history, talk about possible scenarios where a wastewater treatment plant could be located that might best fit.
Shouldn't we have discussed that, though, where we could put that, if it was to be developed? I mean, is this putting the cart before the horse a little bit?
It may not be, it may not be in our, in our jurisdiction.
Yeah, that's part of the, you know, that's part of the engineering analysis to determine what's, what would the cost be? And again, if the business community, over the next, you know, not only at this meeting, but in the weeks to come, if they determine that this doesn't make financial sense for me, I'm better off maintaining my septic fields than, you know, the, end of the discussion. You know, this topic that's been kicked around for 60 years, you know, will be on the back burner, again.
So, will that all be determined on April 26, or just going to be an ongoing project?
The dialogue begins on April 26. I would expect to have complete feedback from those business owners and report it back to you at our May meeting.
So, do you have financials for them to review to make the decision, then?
We're kicking around concepts, our legal and engineering professionals will be sharing some monetary numbers at our forum on Wednesday.
So, we have legal representation, so is that going to be an expense to the village?
No.
Our attorney?
No.
Okay.
This is, this is a.
Pro bono.
This is somebody who has expertise in developing special assessment districts and looking at what are the legal issues that we would have to investigate.
So, it's not our village attorney?
No, this is, again, please understand, this is very preliminary, and it's just for discussion. It's more or less just a survey to find out, how interested are you folks? You've told me you're interested. Here's your opportunity to come and meet with professionals to better understand the legal and financial hurdles that would have to be undertaken, and are you willing to accept that risk going forward?
Well, the residential community has clearly spoken out against this, this whole concept, so what you're, sounds like what you're saying, then, is that you're focusing in on the, on the business community to fully fund this.
Absolutely.
If, in fact, they think it's advisable, or cost-effective for them.
Right.
So, we all know that sewers have been a hot topic for 60 years. I think we're about as close as we would ever be to putting sewers in, barring a vote by the residents, and it was overwhelming, you know, what the answer to that vote was. So, who approached Brandon Township on this new regional initiative for sewers?
On day three of my job.
And who gave you that direction?
I took the initiative on my own because I had the opportunity to meet with Supervisor Thurman and School Superintendent Outlaw for a meet and greet, and I threw out the subject of sewers, as to what they felt their communities and the school district issues were. were related to sewers. And obviously, we all know that the school district is facing an approximate $1.5 million dollar financial burden by November 2019. And so, the school district is very much interested in seeing if there's an alternative that could be implemented that would help address their future requirements. And over the last couple of years, there's been some periodic feedback from folks, not only along the M-15 corridor, but all the way down into the Lakes Residential Communities within the township, that are expressing concern about the potential impact of septic fields contaminating their lakes that ultimately would flow up the Kersley Creek. So, it's something, again, that we've had the dialogue with those folks, they've expressed interest in at least pursuing the concept, and this concept has evolved to the point of this forum that you're well aware of now.
So, it's no secret that the members of the community that support sewers have always been there. It's the same members of the community that supported sewers early on. So, wouldn't this be a Brandon Township initiative now, that the village has voted against that? So, as opposed to us carrying the weight and resources to spearhead this initiative, meaning, knowing that it's going to benefit the people on the Lakes, the Brandon Township corridor, and then the very small, yes, members of our community, wouldn't it benefit them more than, and wouldn't it be a Kathy Thurman initiative to take on?
You mentioned one aspect of that, Mr. Ashman, and that is our business community. And everybody I've met within the DDA district has been an advocate, or at least willing to consider sewers for the downtown area. And it's no secret that we are very limited on the type of businesses that can settle in our downtown district because of the current Oakland County health requirements. And so, this provides an avenue for them to investigate that option.
Well, the only thing I would ask is, when you have this meeting on the 26th, I would set Ms. Thurman aside and ask her if she's willing to take on the bulk of this work, because the bulk of the work on that corridor will be in Brandon Township as opposed to the village. You're talking about running one line from M-15 right down Mill Street to take care of our, versus the stretch that's going to happen down M-15?
As well as Groveland Township, as well as Groveland Township as well.
Understood. So, I guess my point is, I don't want to see this a village initiative, when it's in the bulk of this construction, in the bulk of the services will be servicing Brandon Township. I'm not saying, I'm just, right now, I don't, I haven't heard anything Brandon Township, I haven't read anything in a newspaper Brandon Township pursuing this, and it looks like it's another village initiative, which we all are learning for the first time here tonight, based off of trustee Butsu's information here.
Well, again, one of the key words that's in that letter is, it's a regional collaborative approach. So, it's not strictly the village, but it's the village, the township, part of Groveland Township, and the school district. So, you've got four entities that have an interest in looking at this type of concept along the M-15 corridor.
Well, would you agree that, though, this should have maybe come to us, to let us know what's going on, and our neighbors and our friends know what's going on before it happens? It's kind of the backdoor channel again, and I'd like to get away from that. I think when a neighbor asks me what's going on, I'd like to be able to tell them, I kind of know a little bit, maybe not the whole thing. So, maybe, had it been handled differently, we wouldn't be discussing it right now. So, maybe in the future, we could look at that.
Point well taken.
You said May, you might have some further information?
Yeah, I'm happy to give a report to this council at our May meeting on what we've gleaned over the next few weeks, if this thing has any potential of going forward.
Anything else, Mark? You all set?
Yep.
Thank you.
I got an update today regarding our documents on demand, which is the access to the meeting minutes and agendas in a different electronic format. They will probably be ready to go for user acceptance testing next week, and then, from then, they will move to implementation and go live probably the week or two following, so probably by the end of May, I'm looking. So, it seems to be going well with that, and personal committee met last week, and there's a few things that we'll be discussing on our workshop. And personal committee is reviewing the remaining files that need to be in the file retention and taking proper safeguards to ensure that those records are safeguarded, because they're the employee files.
Since Keith Dialis is absent with notice tonight, I'll talk a little bit about the Planning Commission. Primarily, there is, they had a meeting last week, and they had a, there was a resignation by Charles Cration, Charlie Cration. And so, we do have an opening on the Planning Commission, and I have received some input from two potential nominees, one being retired teacher Pat George, who lives on Church Street, and another one being Roger Ingles, who's a semi-retired contractor who lives on South Street, right across from Thompson's Hardware. I've talked with both of these gentlemen, and for the balance of the two-year term remaining on Charlie Cration's seat, I would nominate Roger Ingles for that particular position. And if there are other individuals you might want to consider, let me know.
How do we post for an opening like that, Wayne?
Technically, we don't, when it's midterm. It's, I can receive nominations, and the final decision would be, I would make a recommendation, and then it would be up to council.
So, it's an appointment, basically?
It's an appointment, yeah. So, if you want to, I, he asked me, Roger Ingles asked me if he should show up tonight, and I said, "Well, it's up to you, you don't have to at this point, but, you know, if there are other individuals who want to come forward, then we'll consider that as well."
So, when you say we don't post, these two gentlemen were approached, and you let them know that the position was open?
I also, as alluded to earlier, we're in a point of of review, and this has come up, that we probably would need to make a more concerted effort to tie in our historical activities within the village. What's come up in the last couple of meetings is that I've discovered that there are several projects that, while they were not voted down or disapproved in any way, they were not completed. They were partially started, not completed, and so, forgotten. And so, part of our history is, is that we need to become reacquainted with those projects. So, I'm proposing that we hold a special meeting, a study session, if you will, to put together some of these historical issues, because some of our issues that we've had, particularly the last couple of months, had to deal with issues that people have forgotten about. And, for example, Mr. Sutton, Ron Sutton, was on the school board back in 1965, when a sliver of land was decided to be given to the village from the school. And because of the cost of the particular project at the time, the project was shelved, it never happened, and now, we're looking at reconvening that possibility. And low and behold, it was discovered that that parcel was never fully deeded over to the village, and the intent was that it should have been deeded to the village. There's so, and these things have happened. Cooperative ventures, I think, are good. The, when we first built the first four tennis courts in our community, we formed a private corporation, just like Mr. Trent is talking about, to develop that particular recreational need. We privately raised about three-quarters of the funds, and we stalled. So, at the time, Edna Burton came to, who was a, the township clerk, came to me and said, "I think I can help you get the last $20,000 to build the tennis courts." So, she said, "The only catch is that the school has to donate that bit of land to the township, to receive the community development block grant monies." So, we did, and the courts, and this was in 1975. So, that was a cooperative venture that worked very well. And so, these kinds of things, whether it's a sewer issue, whether it's tennis courts, whether it's a concession stand, whether it's a park, there's history that has been forgotten, and it's caused problems and consternation on this board and in the community. So, with that said, I think it's wise that this council have a time set where we revisit these issues and see whether or not any of them make sense, because sooner or later, they are going to come up again.
So, do you have a list, Wayne?
I do.
You want to share it with us?
Sure. There was a covered bridge proposed, for the bridge between the library and the foot bridge. The bridge itself was built out of nice womanized timbers, and the covered part of the bridge was never completed. Why? Because there was no money. $200,000 went somewhere. The Old Town Hall was to have a new facelift and been renovated for, at a cost of about $25,000, and it was determined, oops, there was a problem at the old mill. The old mill's siding was rotting off, and it needed to be repainted. So, that $25,000 was diverted from the old mill, or from the Old Town Hall to the old mill. There was sidewalk expansion proposed. There was street expansion proposed. And for one reason or another, and as I say, these projects, the street expansion, there was a bridge needed, and oh, there's no money for the bridge, so the expansion was stalled. And that was when Ted Baker was here, and that was the Church Street expansion. When was that, Ron? Do you recall, off the top of your head?
In the 80s.
In the 1980s. You know, so, there are several projects that we try to be proactive as planners until there's a crisis, and then the crisis takes precedence, and that project, no matter how well it was intended, is forgotten about and disappears. So, again, this is what I think is in order. So, that's an historical issue. The other thing that was proposed about six months ago was a study session having to do with rules and procedures. When I asked for input from our council members with respect to doing an interim six-month evaluation on our village manager, Ms. Sliva was very aptly commenting the fact that what we need to do is make sure that our village manager follows our rules and procedures. And I think we all agree that. But, what we determined is that the rules and procedures are, were designed and construed under the General Village Law Act of 1898. So, guess what's happened since 1898?
Women got the vote.
Women got the vote. So, aside from the fact that the font is this big, you can hardly see it anyway, the legalese has changed, it's become much more user-friendly, we have technology advances, we have computers, you know, we have, and yes, we're moving okay, we're moving ahead a little bit, but we could be doing a whole lot better. So, again, I'm proposing that this council seriously take it into consideration to update and upgrade our rules and regs, and to have some historical continuity in what we should do moving forward. And, anyway, your thoughts and comments, council?
Where would you say that the new collaborative regional initiative to establish sewers, where would you say the priority of that project would lie amongst those lists that you just provided?
Bottom of the list.
How come this meeting's Wednesday?
Because it's just, as I understand it, it's an initial meeting. It's an initial meeting, the business community, it's nothing to do with the residents, and it's no expense on our part. So, if you're saying you don't believe it?
All right, just a question. I think all those are good projects, we ought to revisit and find out where we want to head with them. I'm just, I just asked a question on priority.
Well, that's a good, but, you know, that, to me, is a, and I'm, again, I'm looking for private development monies and not on the backs of the citizens of this community.
For what is that?
For that sewer initiative, or whatever it is he's talking about.
I thought you said, "I'm looking for it", that's what I thought I heard you say.
Well, I am, as a board member, yes. I don't want to, you know, as I said earlier, the community has already voted. The residents have voted. That's all I have. So, if you want to give me your information as to when you want to have a meeting, then email me, and we'll set something up. I don't want it to be, I would prefer that it not be six months from now, because I think that this community needs to have some rules and procedures in place, so that we know who's working for who. Are we agreed?
I think we should get the meeting in the next
Sure.
Couple of weeks.
Very good. So, check your calendars and get back with me via email, and we'll set a meeting. Thank you very much. Old Business Unfinished Items. On our revised agenda, we've got item 9A, Recreation Passport item.
So, I had asked to put this on the agenda, because there was some additional information in regards to a 40-year lease to the Brandon Department, Recreation Department. So, my concern with that is that we did, as a council, approve the grant, but nowhere did we approve a 40-year lease, nor did we, I didn't read a 40-year lease agreement with Brandon, how will that lease be exercised, et cetera? So, reading about that in the paper, et cetera, I believe that council needs to review this. How can we accommodate the grant without a 40-year lease? I did send out emails to all council in regards to my recommendation and how we could approach this and still be able to allow Brandon Township apply for a grant on property owned by the village. And I think that's, in lies the problem. If the grant was applied by our village president or within the village, we wouldn't be talking about a 40-year lease to the Brandon Township of which we all pay taxes to, in addition to our village tax. So, my point is, I want to make sure that it's clear, and I'd like to have council's input as well about, you know, are we agreeing to a 40-year lease, or can we agree to have the Sherman Memorial Concession Stand be, and we can make a motion tonight, to say we were not going to use it for anything but a concession stand for Sherman Memorial for anything but a concession stand for Sherman Memorial Park? I think if we were to do that, we commit to a 40 years that, that that's going to be used for a park. I don't think we need to move forward with approving or reviewing any lease agreement with Brandon Township. So, I'm asking for council's, actually, feedback first as to which direction we want to go with this.
So, they had to submit the, a lease with the grant submission. They did not have to submit that? That doesn't go in tandem with each other?
They provided us something that in the term of a lease, assuming a lease was already present, but that's the way I read it, but a lease is not present. So, in the terms of where Brandon Township had leased the property, they would want the leasee to, to be able to agree to the 40 years. We don't have a lease right now.
In, in doing further research, Dan, what, what I uncovered was the fact that the, in order to get awarded the grant, there had to be an incident of ownership in the property being improved. Were you able, did you look into this, Mr. Trump, or?
Yeah, Mr. President, some information that I passed out earlier this afternoon that was conveyed to us by Fred Waybrand deals with part of the grant application. And also for your perusal, I was able to get some feedback from one of the DNR grant coordinators. And it outlines some of the criteria that the DNR requires for this type of grant. And essentially, any applicant is committing to a 40-year encumbrance where if there's buildings involved, there has to be some sort of lease if the grant applicant, if the grant applicant does not own the property themselves. So, that's why when Brandon Township submitted the grant, that they required that there be some sort of indication from the village that we were willing to agree to an intent to lease. Now, I also found out from the DNR today that Brandon Township has made it through phase one of the review process for the grant. Last year, you'll recall, they were not approved for the grant. This year, somebody from the DNR will actually be coming out to the Sherman Memorial Park to do a site visit. They plan to do that sometime late June, early July, where they actually come out and they visit every site in the state that's being considered for a grant. Once they go through that process, they'll ask Brandon Township for additional information to help enhance their grant, perhaps get additional points. And then, the approval of the grant is awarded months after that, in early fall. And so, at this point, I think it would behoove us to be patient for a month or two, let them go through the site visit and determine what type of lease arrangement we want to put in place. For Brandon Township to accept the grant, there would ultimately have to be some sort of lease arrangement in place. But there's flexibility on what that grant, what that lease might be. They have a requirement that it be, be for 40 years, but they, they're willing to look at like a 20-year lease with two 10-year extensions. You know, so there's, there's ways to accommodate that over the length of that 40-year timeframe. The reason they put the 40 years in is that if something were to happen to that complex where it's not used for that purpose down the road, to the best of my knowledge, the only consequence that exists is that if Brandon Township were to apply for a future grant on that property and that property isn't being used for what those grant monies were directed toward, then any other future grants that they apply for, they would lose points. It's called a conversion penalty. So, they would lose points on any future application if you're not using grant monies that are designated for a specific purpose.
So, I have a copy of the, of A, A application here. It says, "The applicant must own, have a perpetual easement, or lease the project."
So, Wayne submitted that without a lease approval?
I didn't do anything.
I'm sorry, Fred, Wayne, well, you read it to me, so Fred, I apologize.
Make sure you got that right.
Fred, Fred submitted this without the approval of a 40-year lease agreement.
That has to be in place before it is accepted, not before it is applied for.
So, what, what would have happened a year ago when we, when we went through this process?
We didn't approve a lease.
I know we didn't approve a lease, but we approved.
But you, but you discussed that specific issue as well as some others. The topic of a 40-year lease was discussed by this council in two meetings last year. One, when it was first proposed, you had some concerns, you wanted additional time to review it. You actually had to call a special business meeting in March of last year to review that particular subject. And because of the scheduling of that, there was only a quorum present at that meeting. Only four out of the seven members were present for that meeting, but it was unanimously approved for Brandon Township to submit the grant, knowing full well that the discussion of a lease would come further down the road.
And what did, what, what did you find as to the results of that vote?
It was four to nothing.
To move forward with the grant, but not with a lease approval.
Again, that's, as Ms. Bryce indicated, it's something that happens down the pike.
But it wasn't, it wasn't necessary going in?
That's correct.
A year ago?
Right.
So, I would respectfully ask that when the DNR shows up in our village, that we represent the concession stand as village-owned property. And I would pose the question to that DNR representative that if the village were to provide a 40-year commitment to have that piece, that building be used as a concession stand, as it stands now, for 40 years, would we still be, will we still be granted the, the grant? Would that stop anything? Because the way I read that is there are some exceptions where the DNR, under certain circumstances, would go around that, if I remember reading the next bullet after that. Would that be, is that something we can?
I'd be happy to throw that out on the table. In fact, when I spoke with the DNR representative, she actually indicated your very point, Mr. Ashman, that somebody from the village should be present when she comes for the site visit.
And again, as a reminder, basically for everybody, as I just mentioned about 10 minutes ago, back in 1975, the school district sold the property in which the first four tennis courts were purchased and to the township for this very type of reason. It was, there was a cooperative venture done. And, and there wasn't any malice, there wasn't any intent to do any, but the intent was to help the community become a better community with the assets that were available. So, I, I, you know, this is the lesson, I think, that we have to be reminded of.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And that, the reason for that is, I don't think any of us would be around in 40 years. And all we're doing is protecting village assets against a lease agreement that will be to the township. That's, so I agree.
Okay.
And as long as it's not of any legal problems or insurance problems or anything to the village, there's no reason not to do it. It's just to cover our backs, protect ourselves, and research our information. It will benefit all of the children in our community, small and large.
And Ed, let me ask you something then, to carry it a step further. If we were to wait one year, which there is no urgency about getting this repaired, and Mr. Trent applies for that same application, would we have to do the 40-year lease agreement?
We own it, right?
That's right.
No, we'd be the owner.
So, that's my point, is why, why the urgency? Why are we tying up a building that we own, we pay insurance on, to somebody else to run at their will, because we don't have an agreement? We don't know what that agreement would even look like. And you're, we're already agreeing to a 40-year lease, which we don't know. So, my point is, let's wait a year. Dave, you're very good about applying for grants. Why don't you apply for that same grant? Let's own that building, no 40-year lease, and then go to Brandon Township and let them run it.
Good idea. Is there any reason why that would not work? Does, is that a, is that a, this DNR passport recreational grant, is that only for townships?
No.
Okay. Good point, Dan.
So, we put it out for a year and haven't done anything for a year. Now, we're going to put it out for another year and not do anything?
We're still going to sell popcorn, we're still going to sell things out of that building. You know that. That's not going to shut down things.
The township does, yes.
Are they going to, are they saying they're not going to sell anything out of there anymore?
It would be nice to have it handicapped compliant. It would be nice to have it updated and not continue to be in disrepair. It would be nice to get money while where it's available, if it does not harm us in any way. It's not a power struggle, it's not a control issue.
Absolutely.
It's, does this work for both parts of our community?
I'm just talking about 40 years from now, whenever we're not here.
So, let's, let's do the... Same vote as what we are with that list that...
That's right, exactly.
Fifteen minutes ago.
Why can't we do this? Why can't we come to a consensus that we, since that grant's already been applied for, correct? Let it, let it run its course? Because last year, we let it run its course and they denied it.
And during that time...
Well, pass, pass the phase and the DNR are going to show up. And guess what? If we don't approve a 40-year lease, he's going to look silly and he's not going to have a grant, and he won't be able to apply for a grant. If he bows out gracefully this year and we reapply next year, there aren't any issues with anybody getting hurt or dinged over a grant they shouldn't have applied for in the first place.
Well, okay, if they do make it to the next phase, next step, then the only thing potentially in the, in the, in the way would be a, would be a 40-year lease. So, at that point in time, could we not then negotiate that lease?
We can talk about it and discuss it. It's council, don't look at me. I mean, it's not just me.
Anyway. So, what do we have on the table at the moment?
Do we have anything?
We don't have a motion, do we?
We don't have a motion, no.
No, I think, I think what we've said is, we're going to let the, the...
Let it run its course.
Let it run its course. Dave's going to make sure that they know, he's going to ask the question whether if we commit to keeping that a concession stand for 40 years, will that take care of a 40-year, instead of a 40-year, in lieu of a 40-year lease? We're going to ask that DNR representative that question. And if they say yes, we're golden.
Are you clear with that? Any other comments?
And maybe it's something, if it was, if it was approved, maybe there's just something that can be a form to change the name out of the grant from Brandon Township to, you know, the Fordville Village.
There you go, it's another thought.
There's always forms to amend.
The recreation is the rec department, not the township. The rec department encompasses the village already. It shouldn't be that much of an issue.
Yeah.
Well, and to that point, we do have some financial skin in the game because we have agreed to share 50% of the match requirements.
Which was what?
Which we agreed to.
Thirty-seven hundred?
Thirty-seven fifty.
Thirty-seven fifty. Okay, so, we're moving forward. Thank you, Dan, for bringing that forward. Item 9B, under our revised agenda, skate park management.
We added that to the agenda because I read in the paper that Brandon Township Parks and Rec are now going to manage the skate park. And we've worked long and hard to protect our residents that surround that skate park. I think most, there are new council trustees up here. But just to remind everybody, we've had significant profanity. There, there's been misuse of the park, loitering, police chief, police sheriff coming in to report on a number of calls to the skate park. And since then, we've made a change on how we manage that skate park by, okay, asking the children to come in and apply, so we know who's going to be using the skate park. We asked for a, a small user fee, which John Lyons managed very well. And given the number of applicants, we would hire a, a skate park monitor to monitor, to the, monitor the park for a time period in which council agreed on when it should be open and when it should be closed. Since then, the complaints have all but gone away. And it was a little startling that I, I read in the citizen that now somehow Fred Waybrand is going to manage that skate park for us after all the work we've done to manage it in a peaceful manner where our residents locally surrounding that park are actually favorable with what's going on. So, my point of bringing this up is, I think, the, the village, as well as we did to manage it, needs to continue to manage it, approve special uses for that park, like we've always had. Fred come to us, he'd like to do a skate park competition or whatever. He'd share with us the dates, we'd approve it. And the way he went, he ran it. But now, he's managing it for two months, which is pretty much the whole summer. So, I don't, who, who approve that? I just, I worry about where that park's going to end up after what we've done to get it to where it's at now.
Based on our meeting in September of 16, when we, when he presented his idea, so to speak, we, it was just listening to his, it was just a discussion. We did not approve or nothing was resolved at that meeting. So, I too was surprised to read in the citizen that the skate, that the skate park returns to recreation when we took no action September of 16. I don't...
I recall a discussion to be one of a single event, just like Dan is indicating. And then, all of a sudden, it's morphed to a summer-long activity. I did take it upon myself to talk to the, to the township treasurer, who is the resident next door to the skate park. And Ms. Darnell has basically indicated that things have not gotten any better, that the kids continue to break in, jump the fence. They've had five or six incidents this spring. She named one of the culprits. The, the young man knows when, how much time he has to sneak in and sneak out before the police come. So, I, I, I concur with Mr. Ashman on this one. I think it's, I, I think that it's run its course. Other communities are getting rid of their skate parks. I talked to Fred Waybrand about raising capital, raising funds to move it out to their park at Hadley Road. He said, "No, I don't want it out there. They're going to tear it up." And then I said, "Well, why don't you get a hold of a contractor and raise some money, do some trading services, like-kind services, and so forth and so forth?" And he didn't, he didn't want to do it. So, it's okay, it's okay if it's in our neighborhood, but it's not okay where there are residents. And so, I am against it. I have, I have been against it in the past and I continue to be against it.
It does say in the paper, assuming that this is correct, that if he has less than 10 registrations, it would, it would be canceled. So, I don't know.
He has six.
Okay.
As of today, he has six.
There's six clinics, and the clinic itself is per clinic. If there's enough for each clinic, the clinic runs. If not, it goes to the next one. So, the thought process is, if there's only six for the first one, maybe you'll get more interest for the second, the rollover, if they could do it differently. If six weeks, not 10 kids, then there will be six weeks of nothing. The money is raised to pay for the monitor. If the monitor is not paid for, which is not a manager, it's a monitor. We still manage the skate park. It's a monitor to come in for a clinic. So, I believe it was overworded and taken incorrectly for what Fred asked us for in September and for what we said we would entertain him to continue to pursue with the form he gave us, was the same form that he's using now.
So, how long is this clinic going to last?
It's a six-week clinic, if there are 10 children that sign up for the clinic. Each week is independent.
And what time do they run?
Three to six, Monday through Friday.
According to that article?
According to the article.
I was going to say, no, it's afternoon. I don't have it in front of me, but...
Again...
I was thinking four, but if it's three, it's three.
Yeah, the park will open from three to six, Monday through Friday, close Saturday and Sunday. Session one starts May 8 through June 2. Session two is June 5 through the 30th. Session three is July 3 through July 28. The park is closed July 4. And session four runs July 31 to August 25. Session five, September 11 through October 6.
That sounds like the whole summer if they have a full boat of people at each session.
And session six will wrap...
And session six will wrap up the season from October sixth to November third. So this is going from May to November. I don't know if it was misconceived or not. All I know is the information I, you know, read in the citizen that said that it, that Brandon was going to be managing our park. That's, so. And we didn't approve anything to say, okay, you know, you can do six clinics and whatever and make sure we had all of our ducks-in-a-row insurance and all those things, so I don't know where he got that approval from.
So Wayne, you had discussions with Fred, and you had already voiced your opinion that you don't agree with it. Where do you think we should take this?
Well, I would say that, uh, my opinion would be that you allow the first session and then no more.
Well, if he's-
I mean, it's already, it's already in the works, it's already been published, perhaps erroneously, but it's nonetheless been published. The community, and again, if they don't make their ten, it won't happen anyway.
Right. And I don't know if it's a ten, for a ten for any given session. So we may not have ten for the May, but there could be ten for the October, I mean, so I don't know.
Wayne's suggesting is we only approve tonight via motion that, you didn't say motion, I did, um, that we only approve the first session.
May eighth through June second.
That's an entire month, though.
Yeah, which, we've had the park open for the summer months and we've approved certain, if it was over a certain amount of people, so I have no problem with that.
I mean, he's not gonna run a program if he, if he's under ten anyway.
Right.
Well, it's not just somebody sitting there watching the children. It's a learning clinic. It's a mentoring program. It's a lot different than it's been. So if the interest is there, it would be nice to try it out and see what you think.
Any other comments?
I personally am not in favor of the skate park at all. I mean, if we could, just because Fred said to do it, he didn't have our authority, or-
So-
I think it's early with the-
And I, I agree with you, but to Wayne's point, okay, he's, why, why, why punish the children over something that Wayne moved forward with without getting proper approval, so let's, let's approve the first session and, and let's, uh, let's move forward. Wayne, did I say?
Yeah, yeah, you did.
Wayne!
Let me go get some coffee.
Yeah, I guess we, you know, I mean, I guess going forward, but the one session, or see what, or he needs to report back to us like what he's got. I don't know.
Yeah, I need the dates. I mean, someone might make a motion for the dates there.
The dates of that first session, that's already published, if you would please.
Sure. I make a motion to approve Bran, let's see, to approve Brandon Parks and, Brandon Township Parks and Rec to run a skate park clinic for the time period from May eighth through June second.
Support.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Would you like to convey that information to Mr. Waybrandt?
I'd be happy to.
Item nine C, under Old Business, Quit Claim Deed.
So I brought this up from discussions from last month's, um, meeting. There was a, a quit claim deed on the property owned by, uh, the village, deeded to us by the, the Croissants. This has to do with the, the tax ID zero-three dash eighteen dash two-twenty-six dash oh-two. I had asked, uh, um, our village manager to research the, the interpretation of the, um, of the quit claim deed. And I appreciate you, Dave, going out to a couple attorneys, um, to get some interpretation of that. And, um, from that standpoint, um, you know, I, I know there's, um, different views about that, but do you feel that we've done our due diligence to make sure that that interpretation is no kidding, binding by any, any other legal? So it, the interpretation by, was by the village attorneys, and then I had asked further if, uh, any other attorneys would view that interpretation differently.
Well, if you're asking for a legal opinion, Mr. Eshman, I'm not qualified to do that. However, based on the opinions that we have received, one from our current attorney, Mike Gildner, as well as the, uh, original lawyer that was involved in the transaction, that was the village attorney back at that time, Gerald Fisher, that we have, uh, uh, opinions that basically say the same thing. And that is that the village park has a, what is construed as a negative restriction, that it has to be used as a park, not for an amusement park, that the citizens of the Crescent Hill subdivision enjoyed the benefit thereof for that forty-seven point three-two acres to be a village park. And that if, for whatever reason, the village were to utilize that property for some other purpose other than a village park, and the improvements that would be construed as related to, uh, a village park, that then the residents of Crescent Hill could, uh, take the village to court to seek an injunction or relief, uh, if the property was not being used in the manner that it was deeded to the village for. So from that standpoint, I don't know that we would find a competing or a conflicting opinion based on what is in the quit claim deed. But to your specific question, historically, has there been, uh, other opinions that have been given? I do not know that at this time, but I'm happy to continue the research and see if there's been an issue that has come to the table, uh, since this property was deeded to the village, to see if there might be some other, uh, perspective on the, uh, interpretation of that, of that restriction.
All right, thank you. So I, I'd like to talk a little bit more about that property. This property has been called the Cedar Swamp. Uh, some reference it at the village park. The truth is, this property is a natural wildlife habitat with class-two wetlands. This property is loaded with wildlife and wildlife habitat. As everyone who lives in the village can attest to, deer, fox, coyote, cranes, ducks, squirrels, woodchucks, turkeys, skunks, possums, snakes, snapper and boxer turtles, many species of birds, and the list goes on. The property is loaded with many species of plants not seen anywhere else in the village, not even in Heritage Garden. This property has been, uh, this property has the plant habitat that any animal would love to enjoy. These wetlands and areas do not deserve to be developed. It is, uh, for this reason, I would like to make a motion tonight based off of your assessment of the, uh, attorney's interpretation of the deed. I'd like to make a motion to designate the property identified as tax ID zero-three dash eighteen dash two-two-six dash zero-zero-two, the Ortonville Wildlife Preservation Park. This means not to be used for any off-road vehicles, bikes, or footpath trails, hunting, or any other use other than to support, preserve, support, and protect the habitat and wildlife of this property.
I second that.
Discussion?
Okay.
Any other discussion? Well, we've gone round and around. I'll, I'll say something. We've gone round and around before, right before I came on council, and, uh, it must've been around two thousand nine or eight, Dan and I kind of teamed up to address the issue of hunting on that property. And at that time, we brought in the DNR experts and, and, and they, they, uh, basically, uh, convinced all of us that hunting was okay. So when you add hunting in there, I would have to part company. Because there's no reason why we cannot do bow hunting in there, and that's a legal right. We have that, uh, available anywhere in the community, and it should continue.
I, I'm an avid hunter myself. Um, uh, me reading this, uh, I could say I follow in my, uh, my hunting sword, so to speak. Um, I love hunting. I love getting out in the woods. Um, but again, this is village property. This is not, at the time, if I remember, when the DNR was brought in about hunting in the village, bow hunting, it was, had to do with the entire village perimeter. So we're not talking about other public lands where maybe possibly owners might have the ability to hunt on their own land. We're talking about village-owned land, and therefore I'm gonna stick to my, uh, my motion as it relates to village controlling the land that they own.
Are we talking about, uh, any hunting whatsoever?
I'm talking about, we're, we're preserving it for wildlife.
Trapping?
We're, we're preserving it for wildlife, wild type habitat. That's what the motion reads.
If there was hunting permitted, then it, it depended wherever that hunter was shooting or at what direction, then you have to look at the proper backstops, just like what the township is going through now, too. So-
Well, we're talking about only bow. Firearms are never, never been allowed. Firearms are not allowed.
So but about bow, though, I mean, it's like-
Talking about bow, bow and arrow only.
But it's still, you would have, shouldn't you have the proper backstop for a bow and arrow? I mean, those can go quite a distance.
Again, that, this is not, I, I believe we can take this to the DNR. I think we can address this with the DNR. And I believe the DNR is gonna have, uh, tell us that we can have every right to do what we want with our own property, and that's what we're here discussing tonight, is village-owned property. We're not talking about making decisions for private property landowners within the village. We're talking about village-owned property.
So when they originally did this, they would like it for a public park purpose, not amusement park, and not continual commercial enterprises. That is their two wishes. This is not their wish. The path is not- None of the above is their wish. Their wish was two things. From then on, we then have to interpret and decide what we feel to do or not do with that property.
The motion's out there and supported. I guess that we'll do that now.
You know, also twenty-five years ago, the planning commission did take this up. That's why originally I called this the swamp, because that's what we refer to it as. And, um, I'm not an avid hunter, but I love nature. I think there's some, there's walkable, you can walk half a mile and get into, uh, public land also. But I, I also like the idea that that's a, it's a wildlife, it's nature, and, and there's only so much of it around. Let's keep what we've got.
Well, we have to by law, keep what we got, as far as, because this is a priority to wetlands. I don't even think that we can develop it at all unless we go through the MDEQ and get their approval. You know, because, in, in, there, you know, I mean, there's both federal and state statutes that, um, you know, these wetlands have to be preserved.
According to that motion, I've been trespassing and breaking the law for years, and I can't even, if they pass that motion, I can't even walk in there.
We're talking about the, uh, uh, Mr. Sutton, we're talking about the development of trails and paths. So people going in there and, and walking in there on their own will is one thing.
Your motion reads, I can't even do that.
We're not talking about developing paths.
I'm not sure what you're talking about. You're talking about your motion.
That's subject to interpretation for council. Thank you.
Not to be used for bike or footpath trails.
Trails.
He's got a trail down the side of the river, all winter long. But there's an interpretation.
That's fine.
Footpath trails.
I mean, there is a clear trail down the side of the river, where everybody uses it.
This is all good discussion.
Maybe you should use the word developed, footpath. I had the word developed in there.
I, I'll agree. Developed, I could ask, add to the motion that instead of reading, um, a bike or foot, uh, path trails, uh, we can put developed bike or footpath trails. It doesn't mean that we can't go in there and enjoy the nature if you're not tromping around the wetlands, but I'll, I'll use the word developed, but that's fine for me.
Just for, um, a little bit of clarification so that there's, there's no misunderstanding. In one sense, it'd be like, uh, you're rejecting any non-motorized pathway. You don't want an asphalt footpath. You don't want a limestone footpath. You don't want a woodchip foot, footpath. You want, if, uh, people like Mr. Sutton and others traverse that property and develop their own pathway, if you will, where they've knocked down the, the weeds and the grasses, and there's a place to walk, whether it's along the creek or somewhere else, that's acceptable.
Those trails are already there.
Yeah, that would be a natural path.
Yeah.
Those trails are already there.
As opposed to a man-made-
And if you bend back there, there's probably more net going back there than we wanna know about.
So-
I don't think so.
I can share some photos with you after this. All right.
So, I mean, with that motion, so, and I'm, I'm just asking, so is that something that we would need a motion on versus just making a motion that we're just not developing anything there?
That's what that is.
Right.
This is a motion.
Just to cease all of, any of the other ideas that have been going around. So just basically kiboshes all the-
Leave it the way it is.
Right, leave it the way it is.
And give it a separate name.
So rather than, so right, so really now we're just making it, we're formalizing it to do nothing. Right.
And nothing to preserve than support to protect the habitat and wildlife on the property.
Any other discussion? So we have a amended motion. We, are you supporting the amended motion?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? There being none?
Does any of that fall along that Edward Church? That's completely to the side of it. None of it is at that odd parcel.
Totally separate.
The part that we were going to-
Just as a point of clarification.
I've got one little wedge.
As a point of a cl- clarification, that green over there in that park property, to the, to the right of the white part of it, uh, that does, that does not include anything having to do with twenty-five South Church. The Red Barn property that we discussed at the last meeting. That property could still be purchased by the DDA or anytime, by anybody in the future, and there still could be a trail made connecting to anywhere and not go anywhere near the Ortonville Village Park or this wetland that Dan is proposing.
The loop trail that has been kind of talked about.
Well, the loop trail was originally, uh, talked about and pro- proposed, and it showed on many different sketches and, and proposals, but, uh-
That was the ITC.
Well, the ITC, well, but even so, uh, you know, the ITC corridor, it looks like some of that parkland goes on both sides of the ITC. I don't know how that would hold up in court. I, I mean, we could, we could go on record as saying that we, we would, uh, and I'm talking about right down here, yeah.
That is not part of the village park.
Oh, it's not?
No, it's not. That is a separate parcel that the village acquired through a tax, um, closure from the county.
Why is it green?
Because it's village, village owned.
Oh, okay, you're right. Yeah, okay, I see it. Okay.
They last updated the zoning map, thought it was a natural, in addition to-
So again, to my point, the, the DDA has come forth with an, with a opportunity that obviously, uh, it was not, you know, voted in favor of last month, but it still could theoretically be out there on the table. Uh, and it would not have to involve anything having to do with that park. Or any part thereof, going anywhere near that park.
I, I misspoke. Now that I went back and looked at it, this is part of the village park. This parcel is not. This is the one that was acquired through a tax for closure.
Yeah.
This is part of the village park.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion, we have, uh, support, we have an amendment, amended motion, we have amended support. Uh, any other, any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of the motion as read, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Nay? Nay? So the record will show it's, uh...
I, nay. I hadn't even decided, so...
Oh, you, you gotta, you gotta do...
I still had a couple of questions, but...
You gotta do something.
I was still having a couple of questions and you just moved on, so...
Oh, well, you...
I wasn't ready.
I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
I really like non-motorized vehicles. I really don't like looking at their interpretation that we decide no hunting and we decide no walking. But I do like the motorized a lot. And, and that's fine if I'm the only one, but I just wanted to at least throw that out there. There's such a huge difference between using nature and abusing nature. And I know a couple of people mentioned the hunting thing. I don't hunt. I have nothing wrong with people who enjoy it, and I know people do. So just throwing that out there. I mean, are we gonna take it as a whole? Can we pick and choose? Do we...
The motions out there.
The motions out there and we, we kinda voted on it. So who are you kinda gonna vote? You voted duet?
Nay.
Nay. Okay, so let the record show that the motion is passed and the, the vote will be four yays and two nays. Thank you, Dan. Okay, moving on to item number ten, public comments on agenda items. Agenda items only. Your, your name, please?
Don Best.
And your residence address?
Uh, three seventy West Glass.
Okay.
Well, anyway, what I heard in that discussion was that there was twenty-five thousand dollars that was originated, if I heard it correctly, for the repair or the renovation of one of the historical buildings. And then that never got finished and it got diverted to repairing the building or repairing something else. Is that true?
That's correct.
Has anybody ever looked into getting a volunteer organization together to do those repairs? Because we have so many retirees that were in those different trades. I bring it up, the reason I bring that up is because I managed the Detroit Grand Prix for five years.
Really?
I had thirteen hundred employees and no one was paid. As a matter of fact, they paid to be there. That's probably the most successful, uh, volunteer organization I've ever seen. But why couldn't we get something like that instead of spending so much money on things that get diverted? There wouldn't be any cost involved other than materials and a lot of these other businesses around here. Habitat for Humanity, for instance, has the materials. We could get it at half or ten percent of the cost.
And yet, again, your name, sir?
Donald Best.
Okay, Mr. Best, uh, what I will do is, that gentleman over there in the sports coat?
Yep.
He is the director of our Downtown Development Authority, our DDA director. That's Matt, Matt Jenkins.
How you doing, Matt?
I will put the two of you together and you can, uh, talk and discuss, uh, what your thoughts are. And I'm sure, and, and if you'd like to come to a DDA meeting, uh, our DDA president is, uh...
How you doing?
Would love to have you.
Is Allison, Allison Brower. And you do not have to be a resident of the village to be on the village DDA.
I own property in the village, too.
Oh, you do have, well, you're a property owner?
Yes.
Okay, good. So there's, uh, two people you can network with and, uh, if we can come up with a cooperative venture, we'd be more than happy to take you for your word.
I mean, I think we can get a lot of distance out of that without a lot of cost to the village or anybody else, without inconveniences. And if nothing else, we bring a lot more people into the village to start seeing things that are going on, which would produce some of the ideas that you want for that skate park. Get more people seeing that it's there instead of just the people you don't want there. If you were worried about that skate park, for instance, uh, such and such a person is breaking in there at night and knows exactly how much time it takes for him to get out of there before the police come, well, then put in a monitor. Solar-powered calls the police when somebody crosses that fence at night. You wouldn't have to wait till anybody calls. The response would be instantaneous. And once he gets around it, wow, I just crossed that fence and I'm seen, your problem's gonna go away. And the cost to that, harbor freight for eighteen bucks. I think we can handle that. If the police are charging us anything for their calls, and I'm sure we're paying theirs, we could cut some of that cost out of that, too.
Good ideas.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Good point.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Matt?
Kidding.
Wayne, was your speech on unfinished products, was that considered an agenda item or non-agenda?
Uh, non-agenda item, so that'll be coming up shortly. Any other public comments on agenda items? Please, please step up to the, if you would.
Just wanted to follow up on Councilman Batsu's comment.
You wanna elaborate a little bit more?
Just a little. Thank you. Uh, Matt Jenkins, the executive director for the DDA. Councilman Batsu commented on one of our objectives being, uh, participating in the village council. Uh, being more present, uh, being a participant, providing information, uh, engaging with the council on initiatives that the DDA is pursuing. So I wanted to make sure that, that was, um, reiterated. And if there are specific things that you as council members want more information on, we would be happy to come to a council meeting, see you in between council meetings, however that, uh, is best suited to provide you with information on what the DDA is doing or just general information about DDAs in, in general. One other item, not to schedule more meetings, but maybe it could be, uh, in conjunction with the previous meeting that you talked about getting together and, and, and talking historically. One of the, um, recommendations from our accreditation meeting last month, uh, with Main Street Oakland County, was to, uh, try and have joint meetings between the DDA board and the village council. That would be between the, you as council members and the volunteers who serve on the bor- board of the DDA. Of course, both David and I would love to be there and participate, but that is one of the things we would like to, uh, engage the council on, is getting together, talking about where we're going, where we're headed. Uh, and it doesn't take up meeting time, council meeting time. It could be an event that we, uh, we do once a year, twice a year, however often you feel it would be valuable.
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
You know, I had a comment first, but I've heard many comments about how well the, the front facades that, that the DDA was involved with getting some of those businesses storefronts updated and, uh, and how nice they really look. So, uh, going back to the Old Town Hall, where does that stand in your priority list of things to do to update the front of these, um, facades and, uh, of the buildings in town?
It came up at our meeting last week, in fact. Uh, it is not currently on our list of priorities, but it is something, um, like I said, we revisited briefly at our meeting last week. We have had design assistance through the county on a, a plan for that building to kind of restore it to its original, uh, look. Uh, but that is not something, uh, that is currently on our list of priorities, but it is an item. It's, it's on that to-do list, that, that wish list that is...
So it was a priority at one time and then it fell down to the bottom.
Exactly, exactly, yep.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.
Okay, item eleven under our revised agenda, new business. Uh, item eleven A, engineering services proposal, sidewalks. David?
Council members, you've, uh, directed through budget and through discussion here at this council table to investigate the expansion of sidewalks and make our neighborhoods more walkable. To that end, uh, Row Professional Services has provided a quote for their, um, design and construction services for, um, Narren Street, Myron and Ball, encompassing twenty-two hundred lineal feet. And, uh, the cost that they're proposing to provide those services is eighty-eight hundred dollars. Just to, uh, give you this tidbit of information, uh, it is conceivable because of, uh, utility barriers and some, uh, impediments, uh, that might, uh, preclude sidewalks being installed completely on Narren Street and potentially also in one section of Myron, that as they do their survey analysis, that if they make a determination that sidewalks cannot be constructed completely in those areas, they would bring that to our attention and, uh, the cost of this project would be, uh, circumvented then. And we would not, uh, endure the entire cost of this project. This, uh, this expense that's being proposed is only from beginning to end, if it were to be completed total.
So what would prohibit the sidewalks from going through again?
Well, if, uh, if you look at Narren Street from Mill up to Ball, uh, if you...
Point that out, please.
Certainly.
I don't have it folded. If you look at Narren Street going north on Mill, uh, up in this neck of the woods, there's culverts that are already in place. So you can't build sidewalks on that side. And there's, uh, an area here, uh, between Myron and Ball where you've got, uh, utility poles in the way, potentially, that would be in the right of way. Uh, also, uh, there's, uh, drainage that exists. There's a manhole cover on the corner here. And so, uh, there's some potential issues in trying to put in a sidewalk in this section of street. So that's something that, you know, they'll be able to help identify when they do their survey analysis. And also on Myron Street, which, uh, the south side of the street is the best street, the best side of the street to put the sidewalk in, uh, there's a very large tree that, uh, could be a factor which might have to be removed or, you know, some discussions with the property owner, et cetera.
Excuse me, I'm a few brought up yet, but on Ball Street or one thirty-eight, one forty-four, around that, in that area, there's three or four artesian wells that come up every spring. They actually start spouting water. So if you built any kind of a sidewalk or anything on that, it's gonna undercut.
We know all about those.
I can see why we'd need an engineering firm for this project.
The thing is, we can save money, but we know it's there, though.
Yeah, thank you.
So again, you know, part of the directive, part of the goal that was outlined a few months ago was to try to provide, provide a walking path for our citizens to be able to go up Narren, uh, cross our property here at the, um, doesn't mean the wastewater treatment plant site, to be able to cut through to the south end of Beatty's. So again, that's part of the analysis that would be ongoing.
Thank you.
Would, uh, would Row be able to help identify ways around so we can, I mean, we're already identifying maybe hurdles. Would they be able to help identify the way we can continue to move forward with a sidewalk if we have certain easements or, um, that type?
Culverts and walls.
One of the alternatives that they mentioned, uh, is there's sidewalks on both sides of the street on Narren up to Mill. Because of where Myron is, uh, where, uh, where ideally we would like to have a sidewalk and we're connected to James, uh, there would be a possibility of perhaps, uh, going on the west side of the street instead of the east side. And then you'd have to cut over and then continue north from there. So they, they would look at those options and, you know, it's one of those things where it may not be able to do a flow on one side of the street. There might be an option on Narren, but, uh, we'll have to look at Myron and this, uh, water issue that Mr. Best is, uh, enlightening, enlightening us.
I, I have a question, David. Do we have an, uh, a cost per lineal foot to construct a finished sidewalk? Uh, when our own DPW people replace, uh, bits and pieces of existing sidewalk?
Uh, off the top of my head, Wayne, I don't have that, uh, cost per lineal foot. But, uh, uh, one quote that, uh, Bob Hoxwell had received, uh, just doing some preliminary investigation, was to do, uh, those three streets, uh, was in the vicinity of thirty-five thousand dollars.
Plus the engineering. Okay, thank you.
So on, on this, um, proposal, I see, you know, the, the linear feet, but I, maybe I'm missing it. I don't see where it's defined as how, how wide they're going to go. So I know we have some sidewalks in the village that, um, you know, could be a little larger, some are small, some are a little large, you know, what? Is, are they gonna do the, the five, five feet?
I think these are identified for the five.
So I don't see in the proposal, and I guess I would, I would like to see it in writing of what they, you know, what, once they get, you know. I know this is just like the, or the surveys, yeah, just to be sure, but there's nothing in there to...
Agree.
So is five feet ADA accessible then? So wheelchairs can go through it?
So they'll make sure it's all ADA compliant with the curbs and all that, too. But I guess I just would wanna make sure that they define it as, uh, the width of the sidewalk.
Sure.
I move to approve the proposal from Row Professional Services Company to provide design and engineering services for the construction of sidewalks along Narren, Myron and Ball Streets in the amount of eighty-eight hundred dollars. Support?
I'm just, um...
We have a motion by Councilman Wills, supported by Councilman Batsu. A discussion, please.
Just to, uh, just to bring up what Council trustee, uh, Skornika brought up, in, in terms of the width, do we wanna add that to this or is it just gonna be assumed that it will be a five-foot width for ADA accessible?
I think it has to be.
We would certainly require that, uh, as part of going out for bid for, for construction purposes.
Okay.
Because that would obviously, um, increase the price if, if we were only putting three-foot wide sidewalks on, so...
I just wanna make sure that we're getting what we're...
I'm sorry.
No, I just wanna say, we just wanna make sure it's, you know, we need to make sure everything's in a contract format so that everybody's on the same page.
Would, would not the ADA requirements trump whatever we want, we want it anyway?
Uh, it depends on, uh...
This is new construction.
Yeah, new construction. Uh, we'll, we'll verify that.
They, I would think they would have to be in accordance with, um, compliance on any of those things, but, yeah.
Any other comments? Questions? Tanya?
Nope.
Okay, uh, Rockall vote, please.
Ashman?
Yes.
Skornika?
Yes.
Sliva?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Batsu?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Thank you, David. Item eleven B, Oakland County CISMA memorandum of understanding. I understand we have a expert here to discuss this issue of fragmities.
You have fragmities. I drove around town, I saw it. I'm Leslie Clark, um, live in Kegel Harbor, and I represent Kegel Harbor on the Oakland County CISM. And they sent me here to invite you to join because we don't want a hole in the map where you guys are. We've Brandon Township, we've got fourteen, uh, CVTs in Oakland County. We've got six conservation organizations and we've got eight county agencies, including Oakland County Parks and Rec and West Bloomfield Parks and Rec, which is huge. And I think you've seen a copy of our memorandum of unders- memorandum of understanding. That's how we govern ourselves. We got together in twenty-fourteen, a bunch of municipalities to go after grant money from the state. The Michigan invasive species grant program. We didn't get any money that year, but we formed this organization and then went ahead and did our normal spend. Each, uh, township or city or village did what they had been planning to do, which was treat a certain amount of invasive species in their areas. Road Commission of Oakland County coughed up seventy-five thousand dollars as match to neighboring communities who were doing work on, um, road right-of-ways and areas adjacent to road right-of-ways. So we did this work without a grant, and then last year we got a grant. So for twenty-sixteen and twenty-one... So for 2016 and 2017, we're talking about about $450,000 worth of treatment done by these communities. And the grant is also paid for a coordinator, part-time, and paid for the creation of a strategic plan. So we have a strategic plan now that we can share with everybody in the county about how we're going to move forward to work together to fight invasive species. It's time to apply for the next grant. That'll happen in June, I think, the final grant. We don't even know what it's gonna be, but it's coming out in June, we're going to apply. And we know that the more signatories we have, the better our chances will be. The other thing that we are doing as a CISM is talking to the Oakland County Board of Commissioners through the Business Roundtable Quality of Life Subcommittee. Because we think they have deep pockets. And we think that quality of life and your business environment is affected by how much fragmites you've got surrounding your downtown. So, they're, they're interested, and we're still talking. I live in Kegel Harbor, which is half the size of Ortonville, but with twice the population. So we're like the commercial, we're the population center for West Bloomfield Township. We have these t-shirts that say, "Kegel Harbor, capital of West Bloomfield." They don't like it. Anyway, we have huge amounts of invasive species in that half-square mile. Because of all these corridors, we have major crossroads, we have three lakes, we have just tons of people moving through and spreading invasive species through the town. So, and I'm the sole, I'm the volunteer that does all the killing, and I am the match. So we're really tiny, we get maybe $1,000 or $2,000 out of that. We use that money to go pay for professionals to treat over water. And I do treating on dry land for free, that kind of thing. So what we want you to do is to sign up for this, it costs nothing. You can leave it anytime you want. And then pick somebody, like you, to come and represent your community on the steering committee for the CISM. Because he made a really nice speech about your wetland, I liked that.
Well, have you?
He's the one.
I got your number.
There's a whole lot of people just like you meeting the second Thursday of every month at Waterford Township Fire Hall. And then, so you as a council would approve who it is that's going to represent you? I don't rep, I'm not an official of Kegel Harbor. I went to the council meeting and I said, "Let me go, let me go," and they said, "Okay, you go." But I have an interest and I have some background. So it can be anybody, as long as you are authorized to speak for your board. And when there's something like the MOU comes up that needs signing, you bring it back to your board. We will be doing a grant application, I think, June. So what else can I tell you? Do you have any questions about this?
Just to recap again, the amount of monies that you have previously?
We had nothing, and we spent it out of our own pockets. Out of the last grant cycle from the MISGP, they gave the Oakland County CISM, I think it was about $250,000. Some of that was spent on a strategic plan. So they paid professionals to help them develop a strategic plan using charettes, they call them, those kinds of things. And they also paid the salary for a part-time coordinator, who we'd like to make permanent. The matching money, I think there's a say in here, let me check this slide. 205, that was matched. So the grant was, like, 205,000 went directly for treatment, or reimbursement for treatment. That was over, it was double that for two years. That was 2016, 2017, we're doing the same thing. Now, I'm not to tell you you're gonna get any money out of this. We don't know, we don't know what the next grant cycle's going to be. But part of the job of the CISM is to look around for other sources of funding. Most of the townships are spending big bucks, I mean, thousands and thousands to treat on an ongoing basis. This gets them, they provide that as match, and the state gives us more money to spend on even more treatment. But that grant also tells us what to treat. You have other problems here, I'm sure. You may have milfoil or something that you're dealing with in the, in the, in the lake, or garlic mustard, or things that are not on the state priority list at the moment. We all do, and so we're treating those with other funds. So, joining now means that you would be involved in the next, in the grant application that we're putting forward. We don't know what we're applying for yet, because it hasn't come out yet. It'll likely involve some match. Are you spending money now?
No.
No. Fragmites is not expensive to treat. And what, one of the things we do as a CISM is make it easier to engage professionals. Like, they have gone through an RFQ process to vet a large number of contractors who can treat, that are already approved by the DNR, and that meet our criteria. So, you should be budgeting for dealing with the fragmites on your city property and thinking about how to encourage private landowners to deal with it on theirs. By making it easier for them to apply for a permit, or easier to engage a contractor. A few hundred dollars goes a long way when you're treating fragmites. It's not that expensive. Not like Japanese knotweed or swallowwort. They're much harder to kill. But your fragmites, there's a curve, and you've probably seen it used a lot of different ways. It just kinda goes up, and then it's like logarithmic. And if you start treating back here, it's really cheap to control something. If you get up to here where it's getting pretty well-established, you can still do it, but it's more expensive. At the point where the public notices you've got a problem, you're way up here, and you're almost beyond the point of eradication. The best you can hope for is that you can keep the drains cleared by adding maintenance work to clear them two, three times a year. So there's, there's a huge return on treating early and getting things down. Now, when you have a small space like Kegel's a half a mile, my goal is not control, my goal is eradication. Because I've only got a half a square mile, and I'll go door to door and say, "Can I come in your backyard and kill your weeds?" And they let me do it. And I'm still using the five-gallon pail of glyphosate that cost me 200 bucks two years ago.
Really?
Yeah, it's cheap to kill. If you get a person in your town to be a volunteer and get them certified as a pesticide applicator, you're golden. Or you engage somebody to do it. And we can help you find people that do it. Especially overstanding water, which is where most of yours is, right? It's along the creek, around the park.
I was gonna ask, where's that, where, where's our, where's our problem?
In my backyard.
You've got it in your backyard? Is it on dry land?
Yep.
I provided a map to try to identify a couple of big problem areas that exist in the village today. On Oakwood Road, just east of Cedar Street.
Yeah.
That is a predominant area.
That's a big one.
Kathy Thurman has told me that the, that that area was treated and that we're waiting for Oakland County Road Commission to actually mow along the right-of-way there. That's, so that's a work in progress.
Kathy's on the executive steering committee of this CISM.
But also, the village owns a parcel of land, again, that was acquired through tax foreclosure several years ago on Cedar Lake Lane. There are so many fragmites there, I'm going to suggest that we rename it Fragmite Boulevard because of the large quantity that exists there.
And this is where you guys have to work together, because if you're treating on township land and you're not treating on village land and they're like this, you haven't solved the problem. That the roots are going right under that boundary. And I have been wondering just how they were affecting the, you know, the drain system, so why'd you mention that?
Yes, I've got yard trash. Well, the library is one of the test sites for the township, and it's a two-year program. And that's, they just did a pocket area, and they-
They did a special kind of a burn, I think, away, didn't they?
And we usually have the fire department burn it every year.
Yeah.
And we just try to, like you said, control, not to, you know, be proactive. But they are part of the test site, and we've been excited with it, so I definitely haven't killed it.
If you didn't kill it, it'll be back any day now. And I will tell you that the first patch I eradicated, and I went down there in the spring, and there was one stalk like this, so I knew it was time. There was one stalk, I was so excited. And it, it's like, it works, it works. But you, if you can, if you just keep burning it, you're never gonna kill it. If you burn it, now all you've got is clean, fresh growth, there's no standing dead stuff in there, then late summer and early fall, when you actually go in and do treat it, you're only treating the green stuff. And then over the winter, you cut that dead stuff down, and the next spring, nothing comes back. And you go, yay.
Really?
It works.
So what, the, the treatment method, you're talking pesticides, or?
Herbicide.
Herbicide?
Yeah.
And then also burning does not, it's not effective way of eradication, but just controlling?
No, it doesn't even control it. It's actually a huge fire hazard, this stuff, because it's little chimneys, it's tubular. Or in township, they've got it under gas pipelines. So they're working hard with the utilities, even under the electrical lines. And that's something else we're working on, is we're working with ITC and these other utility and corridor-type people. They say, "We'll do what you say if you pass the law." Well, if you have an ordinance that says anybody working under the ITC right-of-way has to kill any invasives they find, they'll do it. They've got the money. They just need a, you know, a checkmark to say they gotta do this. So we're trying to pursue those kinds of things. But the, the cutting down or the burning of the dead material is mostly to get it out of the way so that you can see just fresh, green, new growth the next year. And then when you spray it, you're only spraying that. You're not wasting pesticide on dead material. And it gets, you know, through it easier. It also comes up a little shorter because it doesn't have to climb over that 10-foot-tall dead-standing material. But it's extremely effective. And in a small patch in your yard, you can just like, cut it down at the ground and put a drop, a roundup on it, and you're done. One stalk at a time. Depends how big a patch you have.
Put a drop on each stalk?
You cut it to the ground and put a drop on the top of the green stalk. A roundup, then? Yep. I haven't seen any at my house, but I, I- The plummy stuff. Yeah. We've got them really bad over there, where Church Street and South Street meet.
Oh, yeah.
Gee, Wes, I've been looking at that, and I go, this, we gotta do something.
You used to be able to see Cedar Lake.
Yeah. From, from Oakwood Road. You've lost your, your lake view.
You lost your visibility and your views of-
We find couches in the park behind the stand of fragmites. We-
It seems, it seems, you say it's inexpensive, but there's a heck of a lot out there, so it seems like it would cost a lot. You say you started off with $250,000, and, and did you say you're down to nothing now, again?
That was, that's 14 townships spent that. I spent about $40 to clear the patch out of Kegel Harbor. And the part that was on water, because I don't have the aquatic certification, I have the right-of-way certification. We hired a firm to come in and do our little wetland spots. And it was like $600 for these three sites, total. And another $600, or $400 over on a, on a marina for another patch, maybe, you know, as big as this. So, for small patches, there's like a minimum. So those are like down around the minimum. But there's a lot of guys out there doing this work. And there's a lot of ways to apply the pesticide, so.
Leslie, is your phone number on here?
No, I don't, I don't.
Do we have a?
We have a coordinator. He follows this OC CISM stewardshipnetwork.org, that's the email address for our coordinator. He's our single point of contact.
His name, his name is?
Is Tyler Mitchell. And he's, he's get, he's paid for 14 hours a week through our, our grant. And does this kind of stuff, putting these things together. There's five invasive species that the current grant is focusing on. And this is an alignment thing, right? The DNR has, and MSU Extension Service, they've figured out like, what are the most critical things that you need to address now? Eurasian milfoil, forget it, you know, you could spend every dollar you had and you'd never get rid of it. But, we need to address fragmites, black swallowwort, flowering rush, things that are newer in the area, that if you kill them now, it'll be cheap. Things that are just escaping out of people's pitch time.
I have a question on the grant application. When you go apply for a grant, so we would be one entity of many, all under the same grant application?
Yes.
Would that prevent us from applying for our own grants?
No, but the, the MISGP, the Invasive Species Grant Program is intended for extremely large organizations. In fact, Oakland County is only a single county CISM. Most of the CISM's across the state, and most of the counties are in a CISM, are multiple counties, especially up north, where they're, you know, just like huge swaths of the state because there's no people. And that's where all the money went, first year grant. They send it all up north, because these were huge new CISM's that were just getting off the ground and had a lot to do. So we wrote a better application the next year.
So we're one of many communities in this grant application, and we're awarded. How would you delegate those funds to all the different communities? Is there some type of formula you're gonna use?
Yeah, well, how we did it this time was, when we put the application together, we'd say, "What's your budget?" And in Kegel Harbor, our budget is $0 cash, 200 hours of Leslie's time. And I figured out how many patches and parks I thought I could do, and where did we need professional help. And, you know, it's like $2,000 cash, and my time at 8:50 an hour, something like that. West Bloomfield Township, I don't know, $75,000. That's what they were gonna spend on killing stuff in their parks. So that was their contribution. And so each Organize Clarkson, each of these organizations puts in their own budget. And the goal was like a 50/50 match. So, we use the stewardship network as a fiduciary for this grant. And so they handle the money between the state and us. So, you, you need to have, you need to be doing some work in order to leverage that work. You need to have a plan to do some work. So the first thing you should probably do is assess your problem. Map your, your patches. We have, there's a state application called MISIN. It's not even state, it's Midwestern Invasive Species Network. And it's a, and it has a phone app. You can go stand there in front of your patch of fragmites and enter it in. And it'll say, "Is it bigger than tennis field, tennis, the tennis court, smaller than a football field?" And it maps it, and it adds it to, there's this whole database of information about every infestation of flowering rush in Oakland County. And you said Brandon Township belongs to this. Brandon belongs to it, they are one of the originals. And Kathy's like, she had, you were talking about the project at the library. So, she's learning a lot about how to organize these kinds of efforts. And is now serving on this, on the executive committee. But one representative from each organization sits on the steering committee, and we meet monthly, sometimes we have a speaker to come in and share information with us. And sometimes we're arguing over the fine-tuning of the executive summary of the strategic plan.
So I gotta ask you, so are you saying, you responded to trustee Skornika, you try to do, to determine who gets the money on the grant distribution? Are you saying that you try to do 50/50, so whatever one community puts in, that you try to match that amount from a budget standpoint?
No. Each community has different needs and has different funding available and volunteer staff available. So, if you took what you were planning to do anyway, and, so I've got, like, say I've got 20 townships or cities or villages, and each of them was planning to do X, Y, or Z amount of treatment work anyway in the next year. And Kegel, it might have been $1,000 worth of volunteer time. And you, it might be, you know, maybe you're gonna do $2,000 worth of paid professional services, and West Bloomfield Township's gonna do $50,000, and you add all that together- And West Bloomfield Township's gonna do fifty thousand dollars, and you add all that together, and you say, okay, State of Michigan, this is what we're planning to spend, and this is all the organizations that we have involved. Give us that much additional money. So, you know, if we, as a group, all said together, we get, here's, here's a hundred thousand dollars. Maybe the state will give you an additional hundred thousand dollars, and you would divide it up the same way you put your budget in. So if you promise to do two thousand dollars worth of work, they'll give you another two thousand dollars to spend on additional work.
They'll match whatever you're putting in your budget.
Right.
So it's a fifty-fifty match?
That's how we, you get more point, you can be less than fifty-fifty.
Mm-hmm.
But you get more points for being at least fifty-fifty.
Okay.
That's how the scoring worked last ti, last time. Now, like I say, we don't even know what this grant's gonna be for this time. Maybe it's just, we'll pay the salary of your coordinator.
That sounds great, but what she's saying sounds too...
But yeah, D is to get you to start doing something now, and work together with the people who are right next door to you to make sure you're coordinating those efforts, and then you're coordinating on a larger and larger level.
What about Groveland Township? Are they in this too?
No, they're not. But as soon as we get you signed up, we'll go get them.
They need to be. They need to be, yeah, because, I mean, I can see frag mighties in their area too. As well as I pulled into Beaky's parking lot this morning, and there's a huge fenced-in area of frag mighties in, in the grocery store parking lot. Hmm? It's just, they're all over the place.
Yeah.
Anyway, let's move on.
Yeah, right.
But people are, and we're at that point in the curve where the public has finally noticed, and they've gone, oh, my God. But now it's like, we gotta do a lot of work to kill it. Fortunately, it dies easily if you're willing to use herbicides.
Okay, David, question?
Leslie, I've got one last question, but let me just make one quick comment. I've had the chance to attend a couple of CISMAs meetings, uh, in the last few months. Uh, obviously, I've been able to learn a lot from Kathy Thurman, and she's part of the executive committee. Uh, and they've been part of this process the last couple of months. I don't know if you can answer this, Leslie, but, uh, Brandon Township put in a thousand dollars, and they've received ninety-six hundred dollars through the MISGP. And also just under five thousand dollars through the Road Commission of Oakland County.
Yes.
Contribution. So I guess I'm just, uh, you know, so we're a little confused here regarding your comment, a fifty-fifty match, where it looks like our friends at Brandon Township have accumulated a higher return on their investment. And they've also been able to add in their in-kind contributions as well.
All I do is in-kind.
Okay.
Kegel contributes no cash at all.
So if we had our DPW guys, one of whom could very well be a certified applicator, based on what Leslie has shared with us, and Bob is chomping at the bit to try to get that distinction, to try to apply, uh, you know, herbicides to frag mighties in the area. Uh, so if we calculate that into our
Absolutely.
Budget, if you will,
Yep.
then that could be a contributor toward the counties overall.
During the winter, cutting it down.
Yes.
Standing dead, that counts.
Okay, very good.
Education events that you put on for the public, they count.
Yeah, and to that point, Brandon Township is hosting a workshop in July for property owners. And they've been able to work with private property owners to try to, uh, you know, treat areas that are not in the public right away.
You know, not knowing too much about it. She's learned through being in the CISMAs, she's learned a lot about this.
So we not only have our properties, council members, but, uh, just to point out also, our Narin Street wastewater treatment plant
Oh, no.
is infested with frag mighties and actually caused a drainage issue this past month. That when I drove by there earlier today, our DPW guys have done kind of what Leslie indicated. They've gone out there with shovels and they've tried to, you know, clear a path. But those frag mighties are going to come back without proper treatment in the near future.
And what did they do with what they cut out?
Um, I'm not sure where they put it. I didn't catch up with it. I just saw that the ditch is wide open now. But, um, but, uh, th- this is an opportunity for us to, uh, perhaps, uh, get a larger return on our investment, uh, by joining this organization.
Make sure you do it right when you do do it. Even the Road Commission Oakland County, who is the biggest spreader of this stuff, from their mowing, they are learning, they're training their drivers, they have to go wash their vehicles between trips. Of course, in driving back to the shop, they're spreading it.
Mm-hmm.
But they're changing how they do things in order to reduce the amount of infestations that they are responsible for spreading. And to pay for all the infestation they've done, they're giving out their own little grants. They'll take their own money and make matching grants for, um, the townships in Oakland County.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so I hope that you will consider signing the MOU and appointing somebody to come to the next CISMAs meeting, which will be May something, uh, second Thursday.
May eleventh.
May eleventh. Thank you. You're right. And remember writing it in the minutes. Okay, anything else?
Nope. Well, thank you. Thank you, Leslie. Okay, we have a motion here. Anybody wanna act on it?
I was just gonna make a motion that we pin it to next month's meeting for some, if there's some other questions. Can we pin it till next month?
Is there any reason why we?
Well, it's like, okay, so...
There's no cost? I mean, well, we, we need to know what we're gonna spend anyway.
We don't have...
Do we have anything at all to spend for any kind of, uh?
Well, their, their grant application process will be coming up, uh, based on, uh, what I've learned from Kathy. She's able to, uh, itemize, uh, the meetings that she attends, the administration interfacing with the vendors who, uh, do the treatment. And, uh, and we would also have the benefit of calculating some hours for somebody like Bob Hawxwell. You know, if we wanted to include that as part of our
In-kind?
In-kind, um, budgeting for next year. And again, Brandon Township only, um, put a thousand dollars of their general fund monies into the process, so...
Is there any reason you can think of why we should not act on this now?
No, sir.
What would we hope to accomplish by deferring it a month?
Well, why don't we, if, if Colleen's got something to ask now, maybe we can address her concern now.
Well, I guess because I was just trying to...
Move things along?
Right. It's like, okay, so we have not assessed the problem. We haven't decided what we're gonna, what, if any, we're gonna put in the budget. Haven't really determined who would be the volunteer. We do, we do need to look into how the certification process is going to go. Who's going to be our member representation on the steering committee? When, when and where does the steering committee meet? I mean...
I mean, it's right here in the motion.
Where?
We talked about Bob Hawxwell, we talked about manager, uh...
But I was, what I was saying was may, I mean, um, maybe a member on the council, maybe it would be another subcommittee to do rather than during the day, and I don't know when, when this, when these meetings are held or where. It was just something to think about, so I just thought, you know.
She, um, she mentioned something about a fire station.
Second Thursday of the month at Waterford Fire Department.
Twelve.
Okay.
Waterford Fire Station, second Thursday.
Yeah, I think, um, I think we've acknowledged, and, and now that we know, uh, we have the invasive species in the village, we know they need to be controlled. Uh, as we heard from, uh, our village manager, that the DPW can support with maybe application. I know the certifications are, it's, you know, it's not just the bioherbicide certification through the state is
How long's it gonna take? It'll be in...
It's not an easy test to take.
Will it be in time for this next time? I don't know.
But I, I guess my point is, um, is this something that we can continue to work on, to have ready for, for that? And I guess that's the question for councils. That's something that we can work on with your concerns. Well, it's just putting things together, right, Colleen? Is that?
It, it is. It's just, you know, we're...
Support of the project, we just wanna...
Exactly. You know, I just feel like, okay, here we go. We're making a motion on something that we haven't even discussed prior and going in blindly. I agree that it's like, we need to eradicate it, remove it. I, there's no question. It's just all the semantics of it is all. You know, it's like looking into how long the certification, would the certification be, when's the next session for that? Or how, you know, is it something that will be in time for this next season or to, you know, when would, when would it be the time he's done certifying? When would be the next time? Is it gonna be too late for this? But all those kinds of things. That's all I'm just trying to...
So Leslie, when do you have to have the grant application in?
June.
We'll get, no, the grant details only. We'll be doing a pre-proposal in June. That's where we write like a three-page draft. So late May, the, what's, what's the grant about comes out. Early June, we'll be putting in a preliminary, um, proposal. And then if they accept that, it's a couple of months later that we put in a final one with budgets and numbers. This would be for money that wouldn't even happen until next year, but you wanna be in when we do the application, if you wanna be involved in that.
So we have time. If we waited one more month, we get our ducks in a row with all the support that, that we're talking about, we still have time to come to you.
If you do by the end of May, you're good.
End of May, okay.
By end of May.
Our, our next meeting would be May twenty-second.
I'm sure that'd be fine, because we'll be putting in a three-page, I don't know.
I, that's kind of, kind of close.
There is nothing you actually need to do between now and then that would, I think, prevent you from joining, coming in with empty hands. You don't need to have a certified pesticide applicator on your staff. You don't have to have already spent money or priced it up.
I understand, I understand that. It was just, it was just working out the project. It's just the semantics of it all.
So the answer is, we do have time to defer?
I think you, I think so, yes.
Okay, that's a short answer. Thank you. So do you wanna proceed with your motion to defer?
I, I, I do. Just, you know, I just would rather have something in place and we know what we're going, you know, what we're up against.
You like, you like the process, but you like to defer?
Right. I, I understand about the, the problem. That's not in question. It's just about getting a plan in place so that we know who, what, where, when. That's all.
Well, is this something that we can vote for?
We have support? This is a motion, right?
I, I made a motion to defer it to next month.
We have support?
Once we, you know, to get all of those different questions.
We have support?
I'd support it as long as we have time, like Leslie committed to, that I support the motion.
Okay, I guess, I guess I'd better, um, call back tomorrow if it's not true.
But, but further discussion is, is this, can we vote on this right after, okay, we put a plan, you sound, Dave, you got a plan. Sounds like you got an idea. We put a little plan together, we, we send the emails out, we all look at, we all, yeah, this looks, this looks like we have a plan. I, I think it's just, I think the concern is, we, we had no plan going in, and we didn't know about it until Friday or Saturday when we got the...
Well, and part of the timing issue is that the, uh, steering committee for CISMAs just recently modified their memorandum of understanding. And it was, uh, they just went through and did a reorganization as far as their steering committee, et cetera. And so now they have a, a new governance document in place, which is included in your paperwork tonight. And so in order to have them be able to process that draft, they basically are opening up the window of opportunity for new members. Because if we're not a member by the time they submit their draft,
We're not gonna get it.
we're out of the picture. And so the document before you today has been reviewed by fifteen other communities that are already part of CISMAs. And they've had the success that you've heard about tonight. So I would recommend that you, uh, adopt the memorandum of understanding. You don't have to appoint me if somebody else wants to take some leadership in this and be the, the, um, representative for the village. That's, that's fine. We can make that decision next month. Uh, and some of the concerns that trustee Skornika raised, we can come back to the table with some of that background information, because we're gonna have to figure that out anyway at our June budgeting session, which is just a couple of weeks away
Mm-hmm.
after that, after our May meeting. So, uh, we would be able to, uh, provide the information that CISMAs would need to have as far as what's gonna be the village's contribution in either cash and in-kind services for the following grant cycle.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to defer. We have a support on the floor? Any other comments, questions?
I'll amend my motion.
Ah, you wanna withdraw your motion?
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay.
I'll, and I'll make another motion.
Okay.
To approve the Oakland County Cooperative Invasive Species Management Area, the CISMAs of memorandum of understanding.
Got that. Leave it at that?
Just leave it at that. And then
Okay.
we know we have other things that we need to, to take on.
Strike the appointment.
Then we can just discuss that and who and...
Do you need your appointment going in?
No.
Okay, good. Okay, uh, so we have a motion and we have a support?
Support it.
Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor, is the motion as read? Please say aye.
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 Posed? Motion's carried. Thank you very much, Leslie.
Thank you very much. Look forward to seeing somebody at the next meeting.
Uh, item eleven C, Enviro Assist Proposal. David?
Thank you, Mr. President. Last month, Randy Gregory from Enviro Assist came and presented his, uh, risk assessment analysis for all properties in the village. In his report, uh, it was identified that there were approximately thirty-six properties that he felt were at a higher risk category, that, uh, were situated in a high water table and also had the type of soil that was conducive to, uh, a higher risk factor, especially when the water table rises, where it would, uh, impact the functionality of a septic field. Uh, after having the chance to dig into his analysis in more detail after the fact versus what he shared while he was here in front of us last month, I asked him to put a proposal together to determine what those properties were. In the process of doing their aerial mapping to pinpoint those thirty-six properties, uh, the bottom line was that there were twenty-six residential homes that fell into that category. Some of the properties in question are business, businesses, uh, that would be, uh, in that, uh, high-risk category. And so what he has proposed is, uh, basically for seventeen hundred and forty-five dollars to uh, come out and hold, uh, what I would call a, uh, homeowner's meeting to be able to bring those property owners in to, uh, a session where they can hear directly from the expert, uh, have an appreciation and understanding of, uh, why their field is at a higher risk, uh, factor. And, uh, provide, uh, an opportunity to do a walkthrough, uh, on those, uh, subject properties to see if there's any obvious, uh, issues or concerns that might exist with those properties. And having the chance to talk to him this morning about, uh, discharge sampling and dye testing, that those are, uh, services that he's willing to provide if we deem it necessary, but don't need to be done. The reason for that is that if you're doing a walk-by on a property and there's an obvious pipe that happens to be discharging, you know that there's bacteria in there. We may not know the level of it, but we know that there's bacteria that, uh, would exist that would be contributing to, uh, a concern. And, uh, the dye testing is, again, just another serpaphilis type of test if you already know you have an issue, uh, in existence. So at this juncture, uh, the, the bottom part of the proposal, I don't think is necessary at this point in time. I think, uh, there might be benefit to bringing him in to, uh, help facilitate a neighborhood meeting and be able to do this walkthrough along subject properties. I was hoping that I would receive an email from him today identifying what those addresses are. They do have that information. Unfortunately, I do not have it available for you tonight. He did say that these are properties that are all along the Kersley Creek or the Duck Creek. And you can see that identified here, that he's identified two homes on Duck Creek area. And then, uh, the southern part of the creek, uh, not using Mill Street, but, uh, using the creek itself as a geographic boundary, that, uh, where Duck Creek and Kersley Creek come together. The southern part of, uh, Kersley Creek has four homes, and then the northern part of Kersley Creek, uh, there are twenty homes that they've identified that fall into this higher-risk category. So my recommendation tonight, after this further discussion and trying to better understand, uh, the analysis that these folks have done, is to recommend that we authorize expenditures of seventeen hundred forty-five dollars for that section of the, uh, proposal.
So I, go ahead.
Well, this is one thing I, that I wonder about, and you're talking about spending village money on this, I mean, have we thought about writing a letter to these homeowners to let, and let them know, you know, what the purpose of the letter is, and that they are, they, somehow, they, by, through Enviro Assist, they've been designated as being at higher risk for, we'll say, septic failure? And ask them if they would, could possibly want to help, you know, to volunteer their records on their septic system, sort of, I guess I would say, you'd say, just for, so that they can sort of clear the air on their particular home, okay? Rather than to, I mean, we might be able to clear up, there's thirty-six properties, you say, we might be able to clear those up if we just ask for, send out a letter and ask for some voluntary, you know, ask for the, the homeowners to, to send in some voluntary information. I, I, I think my house must be one of them. Well, I've got septic records on my home, and my, you know, my septic tank and field, they're in thirteen B soil, although the creek is in my backyard, and, but, you know, I have septic records, and everything's functioning very, very well. I mean, if, if you would let me know if I'm on the list or not, or let the people who are on the list know, they'd be able to send you a copy of their septic records, so that they could kind of get their property cleared from this concern that you have, and not have to hear about this anymore.
Would the, it's a good question, would the...
Because I think my property's property on the list.
Yeah.
Do you want a copy of my septic records?
Would any, would any, would any tests that she or anybody else have that's in this area, would, would any of those tests indicate what we're trying to identify, if she's going through a regular pumping company, for example? This, this is not, this is about leaching into the waterway.
That's what I was going to ask.
It's two different things. I don't, I don't think that any tests that, or records that you might have, or I might have, living, living on a waterway, would, would tell if there's any leaching going on into that waterway.
Well, after the paper came out with the article, I called up my septic person, and we talked about it, and he said, Karen, there's no way your system can be doing that. It, you can't be leaching into that creek. You know, he's, they've checked my septic tank, they've visually, they've pumped it, they've checked my field.
Good point.
So he feels, that septic person feels as though he has the authority to say that. And he said, all you need to do is make a copy of your receipt for your septic maintenance, and, 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 and that's all anybody needs to see. You know, I called you about, the village clerk about sending it in, but she said they didn't have a file to put it into yet. So, I mean, I've been trying to voluntarily do what I need to do.
Well, we haven't passed anything yet, that's why.
Well, definitely, if you sent me a letter and I haven't pumped in ten years, I'd pump it tomorrow and send it to you. That doesn't necessarily solve the problem.
Yeah.
No, it doesn't necessarily solve, solve the problem, but you may be able to eliminate some properties.
First of all, we don't know there is a problem, and based off of the Enviro Assist analysis is all predictive, and it's not, and it's assumptions based off of when the, the, the house was built. And I believe, if I remember, I asked him, did you take into account on any updates between when the building was erected and installed, and where we're at today, and his answer was no. So, the, the analysis he took was just basically based off of when the house was built. Tonight, we heard that we're moving forward with a case study to entertain a new collaborative regional initiative to establish a sewer system amongst business owners, all right? That is not going to affect residents. Why are we continuing to search for residents? In my mind, that we ought to cease any additional resident searches on septic systems. If we want to initiate a volunteer program where they come forward and, and bring that information, then why not? Why are we spending more money when we came out, and we even said today, that there was no sewer initiatives for the residents, but strictly for business owners in the M-15 corridor?
First place, we haven't, we're not spending any money yet on this.
All I'm saying is, we're spending money on Enviro, what, what is this all about?
This is, that's different from this.
I get it.
They're two different, two different things.
Mr. President, to just add to Ms., Ms. Sliva's comment, it's ironic that the day that she contacted our office and said that she had taken the initiative to have her field pumped, and was willing to share that information, I actually had the brainstorm as I was driving in, that wouldn't it be nice if we had a voluntary compliance initiative?
Exactly.
And, and, and low and behold, I, I felt like I had confirmation when Mrs. Sliva contacted the office and said she was ready to submit her paperwork. And that's really the purpose of having this neighborhood meeting discussion, is to advise those property owners that, based on an expert analysis of our soils, our water tables, et cetera, your septic field probably fails periodically during the course of the year, depending on the ups and downs of the water table. Your septic field is underwater, and is not functioning like it should. Now, that's not to say it's not doing something, but, you know, at various points of the season, it's not working the way it was designed to work. And so, to that point, that might help facilitate some dialogue with the property owners, where they're able to ask questions directly of Mr. Gregory, and find out, what are some appropriate common sense things that I should implement? Are they willing to provide the kind of information that Mrs. Sliva has said she's willing to provide? And we get this era of voluntary compliance, where we're not dictating to folks that you need to comply with A, B, and C, but that you're willing to participate in an endeavor for us to garner information, that we can utilize it in our analysis to determine if and where and when we are seeing potential leaching or contamination of the Kersley Creek, and try to get our arms around this perceived problem as best as possible.
Well...
So, so my, my recommendation to council is not to put the pedal to the metal and try to come up with a septic ordinance, and, you know, certain dictates that we have to mandate pumping, et cetera, but at least at this stage of the game, let's figure out if there's a voluntary compliance type of methodology that we can incorporate, bring parties to the table that we know that there is a higher risk of failure with your type of system because of location, soil, and water table. And get that kind of information under our belts, and then figure out where do we go from there.
You know, my septic...
And, and, and to that point, I'm sorry, Ms. Sliva, that if we're concerned about the cost factor, and rightly so, before we say yes, Mr. Gregory, Mr. Gregory, we want you to do, or we're going to authorize you to do a walk-by all of these suspect properties, maybe we just want you to come out and just have a meeting with our property owners that fall into this category, and then we'll figure out from there if it's necessary to do a walk-by. And so I think it would be three hundred and forty dollars, or, I'm sorry, three hundred dollars, that's well spent, in determining, in helping educate some of our property owners that are in the highest level of concern.
So you wouldn't want to spend the total, you know, the full package, which is seventeen forty-five, one thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars? You're now advocating just to spend the three hundred dollars on a, on the homeowner meeting?
I'm proposing that as an alternative, based on the comments that you've raised.
I mean, well, my septic tank, I'll be frank with you, it's in thirteen B soil, and they are all along my road, because we are located near the creek, and it's, they're located in the front yard. It's where our septic tanks are located.
So enlighten me.
I, I'm not locate, I don't have a backyard septic tank location with the creek running back there, that, you know, whoever planned my septic system, and the way my house is situated, they did a good job, I think.
So enlighten me, if I may, what is soil thirteen B?
Um, that's the sandy soil, which is just like the soil where Harvey Swanson School is located.
Sure.
It's a sandy soil.
Sandy soil, okay, thank you.
It's a good soil.
Yeah.
It's a good soil.
Very good soil, yeah.
Which, you know, if you get down by the creek, in, in my backyard, it's twenty-seven, that's muck. But there's, you know, that's not where my, where my house is built, and that's not where my septic system is located. And you will probably, if you talk to some of these homeowners, you're probably going to find that, and, you know, find the same thing, that their houses and their septics are situated and constructed the same way. So, you know, and I, people, people would be, I, I think people would be happy to volunteer this information, just so that we don't, you know, we, we can rest at ease and we don't hear about this anymore. Again, I'm tired of hearing about it, let's, let's finish, let's, let's do something about it, you know, not just talk about it. And let's let these people, these thirty-six, well, I guess there's twenty-six homes and ten businesses, let's let them know who they are, so that they can, they can, they can tell you what you need to know. That's where I'm coming from.
You're, you're ahead of the curve, so to speak, because you've been proactive. I would venture that some of these thirty-six people, or twenty-six people, may not have done anything so far, we don't know, I guess we don't know.
I, 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 I hear from, from, you know, I mean, I hear from my neighbors and, and whatever, yeah, no, they've, they've been proactive like I have. I, you, I think you'd be surprised how many people in this village have been proactive, who are proactive. I mean, some, you know, they, they've always maintained their septic tanks.
And to that point, you know, in the spirit of volunteerism, you know, if we put out the call through our website, through an article in our local paper, that we are interested in soliciting that kind of information, it would be interesting to find out how many people step up and provide that kind of data, because they have done that over the last year or two. And provide us with pump-out data, or some sort of inspection that might have been done, because they bought a house and had it inspected before they moved in, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, I, I think you have to give people some kind of assurance, though, from what we've been through the last two years, that you're not wanting to collect this data to use it against them, to force sewers on them. You know, we've, we've got to get, we've got to establish that kind of trust.
So maybe, maybe...
I mean, I trust you that far. I don't know how much further, but, I mean, I, I trust you that far. And I, I don't mind, and I, and I don't think you're going to be trying to force sewers on me if I give you the information that I have on my septic tank, because, you know, everything is fine at my house, you know?
Well, maybe we do approach this from a volunteer standpoint, forget about paying Enviro, Enviro Assist any more money.
Let's see how many we can clear up on a voluntary basis.
Let's start doing our environmental, or, or volunteer feedback.
What are we going to ask for, a year back, five years back? How many people are in your home? What do we have to...
In the last two years, in the last two years.
It's recommended every three years, then, and then are people in your home?
Well, then every three years, then.
What if I have twenty-seven people in my home, then it's every year?
Exactly, that's my point.
So we don't have anything to gauge it on?
Where are we going with this? But my point is, we're, I, as far as I'm concerned, Enviro Assist is done. I don't think we need to do this witch hunt anymore. We've taken water samples of the creek in the, out in front of the village, at the exit of the village, water samples equal each other, we're saying that houses in between are contributing to it, but yet the end, end of village creek samples match the front of the creek samples, no one can tell us whether the samples taken were, were from Ecolide based off of coming from the animals themselves out in the summertime, no one can tell us whether they're from sewer systems, all they got to do is walk the creek with high boots, take your samples. If you think they're coming in from the houses, you would know that. And none of that's been proven.
Well, again, I would like to...
Are you going to walk the creek?
And I think three years is far enough to go back.
Are you going to walk the creek?
Because usually...
Who's going to walk the creek?
Whoever, we had taken water samples before, who, who took water samples? John, did he put his boots on?
Okay.
I mean, I have nothing to hide, and I'm sure a lot of these twenties, or, we'll say thirty-six residences, I'm sure they don't have anything to hide either.
Well, we can always, you know, draft the letter, and have maybe some Mr. Gregory, having Mr. Gregory maybe, you know, give the, the semantics of it legally, or whatever, and indicate that as a volunteer, see what we get. And if we're not out anything, and if it doesn't yield the results that we're looking for, we can always go back to this.
Yeah, exactly.
So, you know, let's just put that plan in.
And this kind of offends people who are doing the right thing. It's like, why are we spending all this extra money? Why don't they just ask me for what they want? Or tell me that my house has been identified as one of those thirty-six houses, so I can give them what they, what they need to know.
Unfortunately, I think there are people out there who put their septic fields in in the middle of the night. I know of two of them in the village, didn't pull a permit, didn't tell anybody, and presumably didn't do them legally because they did them after dark. So not everybody is, is forthright and is proactive and as honest as you are.
But they're probably...
Unfortunately, that's the case.
Are they one of the thirty-six? Are they two of the thirty-six?
We don't know.
The, the one I know, the, the, no, the one, the one I know of is not, it's on Mill Street, but it's, by his own admission, he told me.
But they might still be calling in a, you know, even though, we'll say, yeah, they did this. They still probably are calling up septic maintenance persons to maintain whatever it is that they put in.
I think a letter to the thirty-six people, businesses, just asking them if, hey, I've got, I've got three questions, can you follow up? That way, at least you're going to know, you, you get a, a better definite answer, fifteen, you may end up with fifty, I don't know. Just call the thirty-six, and see what they say. And if they have documentation and they're willing to send it, fine. But, at least you're starting from something other than these, so, these numbers of thirty-six that I've been listening to for three years now. It's like the same thirty-six people. When John Lyons was here, it was thirty-six. Are you looking at the same map and just picking them up? I think maybe just a letter to the, the people. Hey, you know, most people are pretty cool, they're going to let you know, I'm thinking.
A lot of people are going to want to comply, just so they don't have to hear from you. I'm sorry, because I'm, I'm there. I, I, I'm not having problems, and I want to, I want to clear this up.
Okay, do we have a consensus that we're going to proceed with a volunteer letter-writing campaign? Is that what I'm hearing, the board?
I have two different things, is it coming from Enviro Assist, or is it coming from the village?
Coming from the village.
From the village, otherwise.
Well, Colleen said Enviro Assist, and I thought, why are we paying him if we can do it?
No, I just thought, maybe, you know, I mean, well, I was just thinking, you know, we could get some, out of his...
I don't think we need to go to him yet.
Some of the specifics, or maybe we can get that out of his report and use, in our letter, so that we can take statistics or specific information from his findings and put in the letter, so...
Okay, so we're going to direct our village manager to draft a letter, and include what kind of criteria?
Or even a phone call, it doesn't have to be a letter, I mean, there's thirty-six people, my goodness.
Well, we have to ask, we have, we have to be...
Keep it informal, keep it neighborly.
We have to be consistent with our questions, so what, we have to develop a question.
Well, we can write our questions down, but Dave can call and say, hey, Pete, you know, I'm the new village manager. We're, we're just trying to get an idea here. Do you, do you want to participate in a, can I ask you some questions?
Okay, so what are the questions? That's my question.
Well, that's where Dave...
Well, what about, instead of a timeframe, it's, can you tell us the last two dates of your pumping? Instead of how many times in the past five years? Can you give me the last two dates you've been pumped?
Or the last date.
The last time you had a pump.
Send it...
But it's not, like I said, it's...
Send the copy of the receipt.
Tony, it's kind of a start, it's just kind of a, it's start, we're just talking for all these months, just start with that, maybe we can get to a, a point, and then go from there.
And at least, you know, you're starting to communicate with these thirty-six people, of which I'm sure that I'm one of them. Give it a try, you probably, hopefully we can eliminate some of this.
Unless you have your marching orders, I guess, although they're not terribly detailed, but...
Sometime over the next week, I will put a preliminary draft together and send it to council to get some feedback.
Okay. Via email?
Yes.
Thank you.
And some of those questions can probably come right out of his analysis, though, so they're already there.
Yeah, yeah, you know, it's...
Okay, item D under new business, Memorial Day Parade, Mr.? Okay, item D under new business, Memorial Day Parade, Mr. Uh-
Dennis Hoffman.
Mr. Hoffman is here, but we don't need to hear from you necessarily.
I make a motion to approve the parade, the pa, blah, the parade permit submitted by VFW Post 582 to hold the annual Memorial Day Parade on May twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen.
I support.
There's a half-hour difference in the time.
We have a motion by, excuse me, we have a motion by Councilman Sarnica, supported by Councilman Batsu. Okay, now we have questions.
Is it starting at nine-thirty, ending at ten? Cause it says nine-thirty, two-ten start, is it?
Well, it's usually by the time we get up to the cemetery.
Okay, so it's a total time? Right, okay, that's my thought. I didn't know if you, usually nine-thirty, right?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna line up a quarter after and step off.
The actual formal program at the cemetery begins at ten.
Yeah, around ten. I have a time for when I apply for the flyover, but I, but we're getting one item.
Oh, yeah, that was my next question, you don't know, and, and you won't know till they show up?
Right, like last year.
Those are great, too.
You gotta get them eight, ten, twelve hours, or, or ten, I knew it was given.
Okay.
Say, no, you gotta petition the Pentagon, and then they send the permit application to, so.
Is that how you apply now?
Yeah, you gotta, years ago, you just called over there, not anymore. You gotta petition to get a speaker, I don't know if you get a speaker.
We have to petition pet, the Pentagon to get a speaker?
There's one online, and he goes, um, for the fellow, passes it off, and fax it to the Pentagon in DC.
That's a speaker of their choosing?
Well, this is for the flyover.
Oh, for the flyover?
Yeah, the name fax, the request fax itself. But still, online, you request for a speaker for Selfridge to the guy in charge of personal public affairs at Selfridge. And he said he checked to see if someone was available, and I haven't heard that coming yet, so hopefully he'll have a name for me. If not, we'll, we'll just have to wait like this.
You looking for a speaker?
Yes.
I know a Colonel who flies, does the flyovers, eight-tens out of Selfridge, and maybe I could talk to him and maybe help you out that way for a speaker.
Ross Dickinson?
Huh?
Ross Dickinson?
Yes.
Yeah, he was our speaker two or three years ago.
Okay.
And I suggested that to the Colonel at Selfridge, and so hopefully, you know.
Okay. Well, if I, if I see him, I'll, I'll let him know you're looking.
Appreciate it.
All right. I have a, a friend who's a Clarkston resident, who is retired military as well. He would, he's a very good speaker, he's an author.
Yeah, but we service Carson, but they don't have them in Carson.
Really?
Yeah, they've got American Legion.
Oh, okay, that's right, yeah, okay. Very good, so we have a motion, we have support, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion's carried. Thank you, Dennis. Public comments on non-agenda items. Thank you for your patience, Mr. Sutton.
I don't know what I've got to say, it's just, first of all, I wanna compliment the council on making an effort to get some sidewalks. The, the comment about the flowing wells, that's people's, I walk Ball Street every day and when the water's coming up there, I can hear the sump pumps running, so it's really sump pumps instead of flowing wells. Anyway, uh, I've talked to Wayne and Dave about some, Wayne brought up the project, or about the meeting about projects over the years that's, would have been important to the village, that's been dropped. And, uh, I'd just like to make comment about, sometimes, uh, when we drop these projects, that they come back to bite ya. We're talking about sidewalks and, uh, when I left the council, we had the money, the engineering and everything, a grant to build a sidewalk from Church Street to Village Park, all approved.
Then, on, by-
Right on Oakwood Road.
All along.
On, on the village side, it's all approved, all set to go. And one person didn't want a sidewalk in front of their house, and, uh, the council caved in and voted not to do it. And, uh, you know, uh, so now sidewalks are important. We have a dangerous situation on Oakwood Road. Every day, I drive it every day, and there's people walking. So, uh, I just, uh, that's a project that still grinds in my craw that we had, that got way late. Another one, we have a right-of-way from South Street to the corner of the school property for a trail. Uh, we had it with the school and across Mulloff Property, and, uh-
Behind, on the-
On the west side of the creek.
West side of Kersley Creek.
On the west side of Kersley Creek from south to school property, cause we couldn't get, on the Johnson property, they wouldn't give us a right-of-way there. We, the, here's another example of scouts or of volunteers. The scouts volunteered to do that project for us. They had it walkable. Now, it wasn't, it wasn't what you'd call great yet, but it was walkable. If we'd have kept on with that project, it would be very walkable today along the creek there. Now, I, I know that's gonna become private property, I'm assuming, but, uh, there's another great project that was done by volunteers and would have been in action today had we not dropped it. Another, uh, one is that we've had this right-of-way from the school, and evidently, it hasn't been followed through legally as it should have been. But that was voted on in nineteen sixty-five. The school gave the village a right-of-way from the end of Edred Street to, which is now the Church Street Loop here. In fact, when we built the loop, which I was chair of the, uh, street committee when we built that, if you notice how the curb goes there and everything, uh, that was all done in anticipation of, even had it not been ever used for anything, the village should have followed through and, and had it locked up properly. Now, you know, I don't really know where it stands. Uh, another project that I think we really ought to follow up through is the inner urban, or I don't know, it's ITC or anything. When they went out of business, they give the right-of-way. See, the inner urban went right down the middle of, of, uh, South Street here and curved, went across just the side of the funeral. And they give that right-of-way to the village. And the reason I know that is that at that time, the county had these roads, Mill, Church and South was county roads. And they come up with the idea that they were gonna stop the angle parking in front of the businesses. And the, uh, of course, the business people, and we had businesses there then, you had grocery stores, hardware, post office and, and everything down there, machinery. They were very upset, and the village come up with the proof that they owned the middle of the street. So that stopped the county from stopping the angle parking. So my point is, I would like to see it, uh, I know it'd be a job, but I'd like to see it followed through. Maybe if they give that part to the village, maybe the village owns that whole right-of-way through there. I don't know how you're gonna find out, but, did they just, I don't know, did they just give a chunk of the right-of-way? Or did they give the, all the right-of-way in the village to the village? So I think that's something that, uh, that we should check into.
So that would be ITC.
It'd be ITC now, but maybe ITC don't own it in the village, and maybe they do, I don't know.
Within the village, yeah.
But it seemed kinda strange to me that they just give them a little chunk, you know? So, uh, just, uh, some things that, uh, throw in the basket with Wayne's concerns there and hash them around when you have your meeting.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Would that be, would that be property that would be over the former, uh, mill pond? Where the, they would have, there would have been a trestle built?
There's a trestle, and in fact, there's still some, the polls show.
Yeah, right.
It would be roughly-
That property was underwater.
Yes, yes.
At one time, and, and the dam went out in forty-three, and then now it's dry land.
Yeah, and, uh, I still remember the old trestle there. I mean, it wasn't usable, but it's, it's just rotted away. So, uh, it's just, it's just a good point, maybe the village owns that, and maybe they don't, I don't know. I don't know how you'd find out, but it would be interesting to know.
Thank you, Ron. You missed, you missed it earlier when we corrected the spelling of your name, you know that.
Yeah, no, yeah.
You weren't here then.
No, a different meeting. Actually.
So now we know who you are.
Okay. Um, I'm Glenna Hubbard, live up on Crescent Hill, and I'd kinda like to follow up on a couple of comments that were made. Mark brought up, um, the point about the, uh, meeting that is gonna happen on Wednesday, and Karen mentioned something about trust, and, uh, it's kinda where I'm going with a couple of my comments, because at the last meeting, one of, there, there was some comments that Wayne, you had made about what was gonna be happening with, um, the school and, and so on, and, and right away, I heard Colleen say, I didn't know about that. And I, I don't know who else said it, but it sounded like Domino's, I didn't know about that, I didn't know about that, I didn't know about that. And that was just a little disconcerting, uh, which is why I made the comment that I did, um, after the meeting. But, you know, at the January meeting, and I think it was the January meeting, Darcy Batsu got up and, and she asked a very pointed question, and she asked it of Mr. Trent, if you were pursuing the sewers, and you didn't answer. And Wayne, you talked about being due diligence and looking into it and, and kinda following through and looking to see if there are other options, et cetera, whatever all of the notes say. But, you know, it brings us to what you guys are doing now, and here the board doesn't know about it. And that's a bit of a surprise. What do you mean, you don't know about it? They should be knowing what you're doing. And I'm, I, I, I think there's, I'm not saying there should be an accountability for every minute of your time, but there should be some accountability for what you're doing. And if you're going to meetings with row engineering and you're putting together a meeting, I think that the board should be apprised of that, because there is a real lack of trust between the council, this, this board as a whole, whether you guys were here before, during the, um, the, the whole sewer vote, or now, and, and the community, and the community needs to trust this board. And, and our village manager. So if there are things going on, you need to share them, you guys need to know it. And, and I, I am disturbed by that. There was, um, Mr. Trent, and I, I'm sorry, I'm picking on you again here, but you mentioned that you had gone to all the business owners, and that's not true. I can tell you with certainty that you haven't gone to the business owner at, property owner at four-two-two Mill Street. Because I texted him and asked him during this meeting if he had, and if you hadn't, and you had not. And, and, you know, I'm looking if, if the township board has, um, they have not had an agenda item on this subject, and the township board would be as surprised as maybe you guys are. So is Kathy's part in this on Wednesday? Kathy Thurman is the supervisor. Is her part to come and to learn about it? So that this is not necessarily a joint venture between the township and the village, because she's coming to learn about it? Because my understanding is, Wayne, you came to the offices today to make sure Kathy even had it on her schedule. So, I, I guess, I'm just kinda wondering if she knows about it? And I, cause the township board doesn't know about it. There was a question tonight asked about the financials. I didn't write down who was asking about the financials, but the answer was vague. And to quote, "We're kicking around the concepts." I understand this is preliminary, but we're bringing up a very sore, sensitive subject, and we're right back to where we were when we're talking about concepts. And we don't have anything written down yet, and that is enough to scare people on this side of the desk. So, somebody has the answers, row engineering's gonna be coming in, somebody has some kind of information, and I really think that that question deserved more of an answer than we're kicking around the concepts. I'm, I'm asking that, you know, as you move forward in this fact-finding endeavor between the township and the village and the sewers and the business owners, and, you know, here, here, here we go. I'm just asking for no hidden agendas. No hidden agendas from anybody. If you're asked a question, you should all know the answer. So let's just live by if we have nothing to hide, hide nothing at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. That's Dennis.
I'm Dennis Hoffman, I'm the VFW Post Commander at Artenville here. Our last meeting, we, uh, I threw out the idea that we could use flag disposal sites, boxes in the village somewhere, at least maybe one or two, because as of now, my front porch is usually the flag disposal site. And, uh, I threw it out at the meeting to discuss it, and, uh, most of the post members are for it, and, uh, we will be investigating that in the future. I don't know if we need to go to the, uh, council for the locations or if we need to go to the building department for, to pick locations where would be nice to have them placed, or would that be?
Could we do it at the village office?
It depends on what you choose to do, individual business owners, that's their choice.
Oh, okay.
If you choose to do the village or the township, then you could ask them, the library would, would do everything else.
Yeah, we'd like, you know, maybe one at the library and one-
Funeral home's a good spot, Roy usually cooperates there.
Yeah. Everybody asked me, where do they put the flag? I said, well, if I'm not home, just leave it on the front porch. And I've gotten two bags full, so.
And then you disintegrate those then? Is that how you dispose of them, or?
We are going, the scouts have a flag burning ceremony at Memorial Day, the day before. And I was no, today that, uh, on August first, Purple Heart Day, the library and, uh, VFW's gonna have a program there, and they're gonna have a flag disposal ceremony, and I guess they're having, uh, a program.
Get you out of music by the Dussler Group.
So, we'll have the Purple Heart Celebration at the library this year on August first, which is a Tuesday, I believe. And we have poppy days coming up, they are eleventh, twelfth and thirteenth of May. So all your donations for poppies is well appreciated, and you break back into the village, veterans and families, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thanks, Dennis.
David?
Council members, you have my monthly report, uh, just to highlight one item regarding sidewalks. I enclosed a letter that we received from the Row Commission of Oakland County on a project that was submitted last year that I think this council probably had high hopes would be approved, because it had been something that had been, uh, discussed for a period of time as far as enlarging the shoulder on Oakwood. And for a number of reasons, primarily safety, uh, the Row Commission has rejected that application. However, uh, in my conversations with, uh, the managing director and one of the engineers for the Row Commission, we have a fund called the Tri-Party Funds, which was going to be utilized for that shoulder expansion. And I asked if we could utilize those funds for a sidewalk instead. You know, if they have a concern about enlarging the shoulder and people being too close to the roadway there, can we go off, you know, within the right-of-way and use our tri-party funds for a sidewalk? And they said they didn't see a problem with that. So Row Engineering is putting together a proposal to, um, do just that. Is to, uh, to, to, do a design and engineering consult for, uh, installing sidewalks. And it's ironic that, uh, Mr. Sutton mentioned that that project was, uh, germinated years ago. And here we are, coming back to it today. But we'll find out what the costs are, we'll have that proposal for you next month, I hope, and we'll determine if we can provide a safe walking path for our citizens and nearby neighbors across the street on Oakwood to traverse that section of real estate in a safe manner. And I happened to see today a person that was wearing their Beaky shirt, an employee who was walking on the grass part. You know, they weren't by the road, but they were actually walking down the grassy terrain of their respective property owners, so. And the feedback I've gotten is that every property owner between Cedar and Beaky's is open to the prospect of some walkway or path being on their property. So I'm encouraged that we might be able to bring this to fruition sometime in the near future.
Would, just a quick question, would that require a separate bridge over the creek then?
That's something that we'll have to talk to the Road Commission and row to see if they will dictate something going over the creek, or if they will allow us to, you know, be on that small section of the shoulder there, but.
Yeah, I know it would cost money, but I would be in favor of a separate, separate bridge, only because I do know how narrow it is, and really, it is scary just walking, walking in that area, really.
And to that point, Mr. Ashman, you know, if we were to have been pursuing, let's say, a pathway that was tied in with the Iron Belt Trail to install a footbridge that would meet their requirements, would cost a ton of money. If we're doing it this way, we can probably design something that's going to be much, much less to accommodate that need, so.
But there's other grants out there we can pursue as well?
Potentially, yes, there's TAP grants and things of that nature that we'll certainly investigate, and we'll see how far our tri-party funds will get us toward completion of this project. We've got fifty-three thousand dollars allocated in our tri-party fund account, so it'll be interesting to see what the final cost is to install sidewalks there on Oakwood. So we'll keep you apprised as those things develop, and there's been some discussion early in the evening about rules and procedures. I anticipate with all of the high-profile items we've talked about the last three months, that next month's agenda might be less time-consuming and would give us the opportunity to concentrate more rigorously on the rules and procedures that have been distributed to you months ago. So if you can make it a homework project over the next few weeks to review those again and have them fresh in your mind, we'll do our utmost to make some headway on that topic next month. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Questions for the manager?
Regarding reply, and it's come and gone.
We were told that the paperwork was going to be received within twenty-four hours. And we actually took the proactive measure of reserving a tentative date for the next step in the process that would have to take place. The timeline for that has come and gone, the court date that was specified was done with the idea that the defendant was going to pursue that course of action, and it'll be interesting to see what transpires on the next court date.
And then on B with roads, you indicated that you and Bob have mapped out a ten-year road improvement strategy. Keith, I believe, is our council member, has he been, was he included in that?
Absolutely.
Okay, because it doesn't make any mention that Bob, you and Keith were involved, so I was just questioning if he was involved in that strategy.
Keith is involved from the standpoint that he's part of the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission is developing the capital improvement plan, and that is part of our monthly discussion.
Okay.
I have a question back to our homework assignment, rules and procedures, who drafted that?
Drafted what?
The rules and procedures that we're asked to.
That we're looking at, it was off the Michigan Municipal League website, and it was patterned after a community that's about the size of us, it's called Lake Pleasant, Michigan.
Was it Lake Isabella?
No, it was Lake.
Lake Pleasant? Oh, Isabella, yeah.
Lake Pleasant in Isabella County.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Which is up by Mount Pleasant.
I knew there was an Isabella in there somewhere.
But it was one of several that they had on our website that seemed to match our physical size, our budgetary size, et cetera.
So it's pulled right off the website then?
It is. And we could tweak it any way we want.
Is that something that Personnel Committee needs to review first, or is that something that we're going to review as a whole, or?
Well, I had envisioned that we would all review it, because it has to do with interaction of council members, it has to do with interaction of procedures as it relates to open meetings acts, an educational and a enforcement issue, like we've been talking about, Glenis has brought up and others about communications, better improved communications, so that's, we've been trying to do that for six months, so.
Is that something maybe in our work session?
Oh, absolutely.
So it's not, it's not going to be at our next meeting, we're going to do it in a workshop?
That's what I would like to see, if council agrees.
The document you're talking about was the document that we were given at the December twelfth Village Council meeting?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Yep, and if you, if you look through your items that you have in your archives, and if you can't find it, then let us know.
I have it.
There'd be another copy, too. I think that takes care of our business for the evening.
No, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Sorry, guys, I just have a clarification from the December twelfth, two thousand sixteen minutes. B, the electronic funds resolution, and C, the purchasing and contracting policies procedures, the motions are identical, but they're two separate topics. So I would just like clarification on that. Electronic funds resolution, and then it says to adopt the purchasing and contracting policies, but it's, this is the topic's electronic funds, and then here it says to adopt the purchasing contracting, and it's here. So it's not correct. This is our topic, electronic funds resolution, and the motion was to adopt.
These were two items that we were deficient when our audit took place, these are two separate issues, and they are both addressed in that purchasing and contracting policies. They're both addressed, they're different topics, but they're both addressed in the same place.
Based on, oh, maybe, okay, I should have a clarification, but, okay. Just some follow-up from February's meeting, has the engineering to specialties, environmental report, or property, I should say, has all that been cleaned up? We had some concerns from some residents in February about the eighteen black barrels along the side of the road.
They're still there.
Okay, so.
The barrels are still there, but the, but the property.
I don't, I just don't want it to fall off, because, you know, the residents were concerned about that, and it's a nice source, so to make sure that we're on that and making sure we're taking care of that.
Absolutely.
That was it.
Okay.
I did forget to mention the BGYA awards is Thursday night.
Oh, that's right, I did, too.
Who will be attending, so we have a final call.
I will be there.
I'll be there.
I'll try to make.
Is that the high school at six-thirty?
High School Cafeteria, six-thirty, and I will send in our SVP?
Thank you, we stand adjourned.